All right, good morning, everyone. Today is Friday, September 27th, 2024. It's now 10:01. We're here for a special session of Hunt County Commissioners' Court. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask Commissioner Martin to lead us in prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our flags.
Shall we bow? Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the gift of life that you have given us. We thank you for this great country that we live in, and may we take our duties responsible. May we have understanding, patience, and wisdom as we make decisions. In Christ's name, we ask all these things. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, and the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
Thank you, everyone. We have Commissioner Hutchins, Monroe, Martin, and Harrison present. I'm Judge Stovall presiding over the meeting. At this time, we'll have public testimony. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. The Commissioners' Court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff. They may be placed on a future agenda or addressed by some other course of response. If anybody wishes to speak here for the items that are listed, or you will have an opportunity, again, to speak on two of the items. So if anybody wants to speak about something else or speak about the items now, we were getting sheets. Okay? You can come forward and state your name and address, and address this now, or not, you can wait till the budget time.
Hello, my name's Cassidy Taylor, 7291 County Road 2537 in Quinlan. Don't let anyone look down on you because you are young, but set an example for the believers in speech, in conduct, in love, in faith, and in purity. That's from 1 Timothy 4:12, the NIV version of the Holy Bible. I just want to come up here to say I've been here for the last couple of meetings. I believe we are very eager to see how much you have listened and to see the outcome, see how much you've worked on this, especially since the last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, none, I'll close the public testimony. We have no old business, no new business consent calendar. Action item one, public hearing, consideration and action on adopting, approving, or ratifying proposed fiscal year 2024-2025 budget that does raise more taxes than the fiscal year 23-24 budget related issues. Before we open the public hearing, Commissioners, we have a little cleanup work we need to do. At the last meeting, there was a motion by, I think Mr. Hutchins, to pay for 3% cost of living for the retiree plan of 1.378717, and it stated in this year's budget, I think he meant this new budget year.
The one we were discussing.
Yeah, correct. But for the records and the people that pay bills and all, we need to clean it up. So I'll ask for a motion to approve that we pay 3% in cost of living raises for our retirees at the expense of $1,378,717 to be put into next year's budget.
Some move. Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing for anybody who wishes to come speak about the budget. At this time, please step forward, state your name, address, and address the court.
Jeff Phillips, 603 Mink Drive, here in Greenville, Texas. Want to thank Commissioner Hutchins for reaching out and having a discussion with me over the budget. I appreciate that, and I was able to gain some insight. So I do know you guys have some challenges. I want to make sure and just say that. But also, it looks like there's plenty of opportunity in there as well. I'm just gonna, I'll reserve those comments depending on what, you know, the discussion is, but in my humble opinion, I believe there is room to make some moves, and I'll sit back and see what you guys would come up with on your own.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Morgan Martinez, 3799 County Road 2208, Greenville, Texas. Good morning. I'm coming to you today, once again, extremely frustrated with you all, along with many others here. Tuesday's night's meeting was an absolute disaster, and each of you, except Mark Hutchins, ought to be embarrassed and ashamed of how you all made yourselves look. Each of you have had the budget since August 15th. You have also had Mark's proposed budget cuts since September 3rd. At the meeting on Tuesday, four of the five of you all sat there and acted as if it was the first time you'd even looked through the budget or his proposed cuts. You claim you've had three budget workshops on June 24th, July 8th, and July 22nd. Two of those workshops were approximately an hour in length or less. The Greenville City Council has had eight budget workshops since May 14th, and not one of those members received a salary for their positions. That is all on volunteer times, and yet you can only manage to have three workshops while on a paid salary, and still sit here and act like you don't have a clue what is in the budget as of this past Tuesday. That's extremely disappointing. I applaud Mark for doing his homework on the budget. Well, I should actually say for doing his job, not his homework, as this is a paid position for each of you sitting up there, a very well-paid position at that, as you all received a near 10% raise last year, and over the past five years have voted for yourselves almost 35% in raises total. It should also be noted that you have proposed a 5% raise for yourselves in this year's budget. Yet you all had the audacity to sit up here and argue over giving our county's volunteer fire departments a 10%, 15%, or 25% raise for the year. If I remember correctly, I believe they've not received a raise since 2021. You guys were arguing over approximately $100,000 to $200,000 in the budget for our volunteer fire department raises that strictly goes to vehicles, gas, and equipment. None of this goes into anyone's pockets for their time or work, while all five of you sit up here and collectively receive over $450,000 in your salaries every single year. You ought to be ashamed. I think I speak for a lot of people here, and those that can't be here because they are at work, when I stand up here and request that Mr. Monroe, Mr. Stovall, Mr. Martin, and Mr. Harrison all resign from their positions effective immediately for failure to perform their duties and failure to work on behalf of the constituents. If you don't feel the need to resign, I can assure you that many of us will do everything in our power to ensure you are not reelected. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Robert Thoris. Live in Cochise Village. One of the things that I've been hearing, and I don't know this for a fact, that we would put up a flagpole for $400,000. Is that not true, or?
It's the city of Greenville.
City of Greenville.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It affects our taxes.
I don't know how they pay for it. I don't. No, we don't. We don't handle the city.
Okay, and you're also talking about raising the property tax, again?
No, it was in our proposed budget, but because there were some errors made in the documents that were put online for the public to see, by the time they were caught, we couldn't repost, so now the proposed budget is the no new revenue rate. By law, we have to go to the no new revenue rate.
Oh, great. That's awesome. Yeah.
How much?
What is that? What are you talking about?
To find the no new revenue rate, it's a rate which does not collect any more money than it did last year from the taxpayers. Except for the new property. I mean, we get to keep the new properties that came on, but we don't increase the cost to, it won't raise any more on the taxpayers. Now, if your appraisal goes up, it may. We can't control the appraisals, but our rate would collect the same amount of money.
Who sets the rate?
Well, I didn't bring, it's a 10-page form that the State of Texas has set out with multiple scenarios about how much was the budget last year, how much was this, how much was that? And I've had two or three people that really know it that says it takes two and a half days to train the people at the state on it, and it's, but it, once the form is, it's a set form, and it sets the no new revenue rate, it sets voter approval rate, and a diminut, diminimus rate by all those calculations.
May I say something, Judge? For your information, last year it was .366 cents per 100 evaluation, okay? The proposed was .355, okay? And due to what he is saying in reference to that, the rate had to be adopted at the three points, correction, .366, or to the no new revenue rate, which is .323328. So by law, we went to the lesser.
That's what's proposed. That's what's proposed for tonight to be approved.
Aduh.
Okay. Well, thank you, I appreciate your time.
You bet. Anyone else? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Oh, hang on. Oh, I'm sorry. I'll reopen the public hearing.
From Emmanuel Banda, I hope this message finds you well. I'm writing to express my dissatisfaction with recent tax increase announced by the county. As a resident of Hunt County, I understand the need for funding essential services. However, the substantial increase provides a significant burden on many families and individuals within our community. In these challenging economic times, many of us are already grappling with rising costs of living, and an additional tax increase exacerbates those issues. I urge you to reconsider the impact of this decision, and what the decision will have on residents, and explore alternative solutions that can address funding needs without placing further strain on taxpayers. I appreciate your attention to this matter and a more balanced approach in the future. Thank you for your time. From Cole Brekia, dear Hunt County officials, I hope this message finds you well. I'm writing to express my dis- Well, it says exactly the same thing as the previous email, word for word. From Ralph Green, what happens if there is no budget passed and voted on? Is there subsequently a shutdown of the government, or exactly what happens? Thank you. From Alexander Gomez, hello, please don't raise property taxes. That's how you'll decline the population and growth in Hunt County.
All right, thank you.
Stacy Clemens, 10448 Comanche, Williston.
Ma'am, pull the mic down just a little bit. There you go. Thank you.
My property taxes in the last two years has more than doubled, and when I came up here and protested last year, the excuse that I got was, well, last year, two years ago, nobody knew about Lake Tawakanee, and now everybody's spouting out about it. That was the excuse that I got for my property taxes more than doubling.
For your appraisal, it's appraisal district?
The appraisal.
Okay.
You know, who sets that? And if the property taxes go up, how is that going to benefit us? What does that do for the common people? Because we can't even get streets, and if we do, they're just around the circle. We can't go to the end. Even though I was with the Commissioner mapping it out, he mapped it all the way to the end. He chose to change it and do only just a circle. How does it benefit us when all y'all are sitting up there giving yourself raises and doing things, and you're harming the people that are here supporting the county? So my question is, raising the taxes like y'all do, how do we benefit from that? What do we do? What do you do for us? We can't get streets. Can't, you can't get things done, or if you do do the streets, like Mr. Martin said, he's just going to do a circle. Even though I was with him when he mapped everybody's streets out all the way to the end, not once, not twice, but three times. But he chose not to do that, just to do the circle, and then lied to everybody when he come to our meeting. My question is, what would raising the taxes, how does it benefit the people?
Well, the county government is really a big service company.
That's not servicing people.
Well, we have, you know, we enforce the law, we incarcerate people, we prosecute them, we adjudicate them, and all that process takes 60% of our budget.
Okay. People pay property taxes for streets, and who gives somebody the right? When you have a person with you that's seeing that it maps out all the way to the ends, and he does it three times, and then decides, I'm not going to do this? And who cares if that person's got a half a million dollar house down there, and they don't have streets to it? He chose not to do it. So my question is, why does this keep happening, and people like us don't benefit from it? It was your Commissioner that did it.
I don't have any control over what he does. This court doesn't control what he does. That's his free thing. He does it.
Well, at least he's voted out of here, and maybe we should get new people voted in. You know, I just want to know, if our taxes go up, we don't get no benefits from it. That's not what we're, I understand we got people incarcerated, but we don't have good streets? You can't even get the law to come out to our house, as we call them. You know, very seldom does a law even come out on time. You've already got the problem taken care of before the law comes out. We keep seeing increases, and we get nothing in return.
Thank you, ma'am.
So that's it? No answer?
No, I'm fixing to answer you. Let me address that first, if you would. We have, Hunt County is made up of 888 square miles, of which we have over 1,100 miles of roads. If we just do, Commissioners can address it better than me, but I think with a mile just overlay is about $150,000 to $200,000, time they have to work ditches and do all the rest. Depends on how much work.
We cannot be, we cannot have a back in court. The law doesn't allow for that, so we can't be talking back in court, and he can only respond with what issues of law are factored. You can't get into specifics about your road or other people. Yes.
Now, you've had your moment, let me have mine, please. So, we have, that's a huge challenge, but it costs probably tens of millions of dollars to even make a dent in it. So the Commissioners do the best they can with what they have. They get about 10% of the budget. Law enforcement and prosecutors, judges, all, they get about 60% of our budget. So we got 70% left. And now we provide your vital records at the courthouse, you know, we have, you know, our tax office is over there. I mean, we have all the support services that we think the public, you know, we're required to do by law and what things they think we should have. We also have a health department, and we have a community development department. Because of all the growth, used to, the Commissioners would take care of the plating and the processes, and it got bigger than they could, we could all take care of, so we had to create a department to keep up with it. We regularly, I think at the last meeting, we had six or seven plats on there. It took time for somebody to go through to make sure they're being done correctly. So we, there's a lot of services we provide, and all of us up here work 40 hours plus every week. We're not volunteers like us, you know, the school, school boards, and it's, and I'm just saying, just for clarity, we're not, we're not volunteers, we're paid. I'm working the office every day. I work nights sometimes when I have to. We put in plenty of hours to do this job, and it's a big job. It's a 50, about a $50 million company with 400 employees, and there's always something wrong with old buildings. There's always something for us to be doing. The tax rate, we have, we have been at the no new revenue for the two of the last three years. And last year, we went up one cent, which was less than a half a percent, I think. I don't remember exactly, but it was, we went up a little under a cent, just short of a cent last year. Now, your other taxes, when you, everybody thinks when they pay to the Hunt County Tax Office, that all comes to us. We get the smallest part of that. Maybe next to a hospital, may get the smallest, then it's us, then it's the schools, and then it's the cities. We're a very small piece of what you pay in taxes. And so, you know, I think there's a lot of misconceptions, and this misconception you got out there that we were raising taxes 17%, that's factually not correct. Mr. Martin just stated to you what it is, it's 5.5%. Now, it could be more than 17, depending on what your appraisal did. It could be less if your appraisal changed, but the most this court was saying was 5.5%, not 17. And as far as the appraise value at the appraisal office, that is a big misconception. Again, they follow the state law. The state law says, you can go to the comptroller's site, and they've got all this on there. They are required to appraise at 100% of fair market value. And then further you go in, then it's got school funding further down in it, and then it says school funding. If, as determined by the comptroller, if every, and they check the school districts' properties, and if they're off more than 5%, the school districts can lose funding. In this county, in the early 2000s, we lost millions of dollars in school funding. A few years ago, the last two, well, since I've been here five, I think it's probably two or three years ago, Kaufman had three school districts that lost state funding. That puts a real hardship on the community. The current chief appraisal we have was brought in back in '05, '05 or '06, because the school districts, we were losing millions of dollars in state funding for our schools. We've not had that problem since then. I'm not telling you it's fair, but I'm telling you, there's nobody here that can do anything about it. There's nobody at the appraisal district can do it. The only people that can change it is those people that go to Austin, and they can change it. And I've explained it to several of our legislators, and they want to look it up, and they don't agree. They don't think it says that. But it is, it's in there, you can look it up. So we, we can't not do, they can't not do it, or it costs this community a lot of money for our children. So that's the issue, and if taxes, you know, I don't, none of us like taxes. I don't like property taxes. I pay a lot of property taxes. I don't like it, but it is the system we have. So until somebody comes up with a different system to fund government, this is what we have. So I hope, I hope that's clear. I mean, that's kind of our position, and then this, you know, and it's a give and take up here. I mean, we, we got to try to provide services, and we try to make, meet the needs of the community, and on the other hand, we got to try to protect the citizens and the taxpayers. And it's, it's a tough balancing act, but we try to do the best we can. And again, we've had, two of the last three years, we were no new revenue rate. And in the last four years, we've had a deficit budget. And we've got a deficit budget now this year, and it sets now at nearly $6 million in deficit budget. And there's been complaints that we got too much money on hand. That $6 million, taxpayers aren't paying for that. That's the money that'll come out of our fund balance that people have been saying, well, y'all are holding too much of our money. Well, the only way we can spend it is budget it. So if we budget a negative fund ballot, or a negative budget deficiency, then we have to spend it out of our savings. That drives our fund balances down. That's the only way we can spend it. We have to have budgetary authority to be able to spend it.
Ma'am, to add to that, I'm reading a fact. I'm reading from the front page, very top page of the proposed budget, which is online for those who wish to see it. HuntCounty.net, go to Financial Transparency and find the Budget tab. Says this budget will raise more revenue from property taxes than last year's budget by an amount of $7.288,445 million, which is 16.39% increase from last year's budget.
Which has 2.5 million read at all.
The property tax revenue to be raised from the new property added to the tax roll this year is 2.5 and change. So, I mean, that is where the 16, 17% number came from. That was the proposed budget. Now, we're not talking about the proposed budget, thankfully, anymore. I wish we never, ever had a conversation about a tax increase. We should always have had a conversation about a no new revenue rate or lower, but that is where we are today due to circumstances.
All right, so you'll come back, you have something you want to say.
Again, Jeff Phillips, 603 Mink. Understand, a lot of stuff is not in your control, but let's focus on what you can control. And believe me, this might be a traveling circus. We may hit city next, hospital tax next, and, you know, school taxes as well, so don't feel like we're just picking on you, this is where we're starting. What you can control is the budget, and what I see in the budget, and I'd like to know if I'm wrong, I don't think I am, but if I am, I want to be corrected. The budget is historically, the line items are more than what you spend. When you keep budgeting more than what you spend, that affects the rate. You should bring that down to what you historically spend. You have a fund balance over here, which you can supplement for contingency, a lot of contingency lines. I think there's an admin line that's like 50% use. That affects the rate. All I'm asking is bring it down to historical levels, reset the budget, and let us start over. When you continually inflate line items, continually grow your fund balance, I understand you might say you operate at a deficit. Well, are you really if you're not spending all the line items? You know, we, that's semantics. We can argue about that. Again, I believe what we're asking for is no new, never, no new revenue rate is not good enough. It needs to come back to what you've been spending and tax us accordingly, and not inflate those line items. That's exactly what we're asking for, and that's what I'm asking for, anyway.
All right, anybody else? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Anybody got any comments?
I looked through, I looked through the budget, and some of this, I'm aware we, I don't fully understand the budget. I'll admit that. But I've looked through these, and looking at some of the requested budgets for this upcoming budget, and then year-to-dates, I understand some of this, we can't remove all of it. We may be able to remove part of it that'll help with some of this. Some of it was on page 23, and we can talk about these items, but we had, for forensic analysis, I know, I think we talked about this Monday night, but it, we had $100,000 budgeted in there for that, and we, year-to-date, we haven't spent anything on that. You go to page 27 and 28 is where we have several buildings that we were responsible for, and if you go through all those without going over every one of them, we, the requested budget was $617,000. Year-to-date, we spent $291,837, which is $325,163 difference. Page 29, again, is facilities for supplies. We budgeted $608,000. Year-to-date, we spent $519,016, which is $88,984 difference. On page 38, we had, for enterprise, and we discussed this the other night, but we had $400,000 for requested budget, and we haven't spent anything year-to-date, so that leaves us $400,000 there. Page 38, we had contingency of $2 million. Year-to-date, we spent $56,856, so that leaves us $1,943,144. On page 38, and we talked about this the other night, and I understand we may not be able to change all these. I just, this is things I came up with. On the Capitol murder, we have $725,000 in that line item, and year-to-date, we've spent $100,000. have $725,000 in that line item. And year-to-date, we've spent $163,341. That leaves $561,659. Page 40, I don't know about computers and stuff, but I'm just looking. This is things that caught my eyes. Requested for software repairs, we had $368,000 requested. Year-to-date, we spent $209,842. That's $158,158. On hardware repairs, we had requested $135,750. Year-to-date, we spent $30,823,000. That leaves us $104,927 unspent. And then, software upgrades, we had $208,000. And year-to-date, we spent $114,634,000, which is $93,366. And then on page 44, I can't remember what that one was. That one was for expendable tools. We had requested $112,675. Year-to-date, we spent $32,770.
Who's budget is that?
That one's on elections. I think what that was, we talked about that the other night. They were going to buy some of the new voting machines, but they were going to push that into next year's budget. I think that's where some of that difference is on that one. But if you total those up right there, it's, what was requested is $5,274,425. Year-to-date, we spent $1,419,000. That's a difference of $3,855,306. If we took those out, we could actually help offset some of the budget with it. If we can't take all those down to zero, which I don't know if we can or we can't, but if you do, we still have, just say we take them all to zero, and everything does come apart like what we planned for. We hope that don't happen, but that's what we planned for. We still have $12 million in capital improvement that we have budgetary authority on, that we could actually pull money out of that to take care of if we have some kind of breakdown or emergency happen. That was just some of the ways I come up with whittling the budget down, right around $4 million.
I would like to, I would like to bring this up also in reference to dropping all this stuff down. And I'm going to use the county clerk as an example in reference to it, because basically, they said that the current budget in reference to real property technology was $68,000. Okay? After the years of date of this report right here, which has been in the last several days, basically, she has year-to-date expenses of $60,000. So, you're looking at $68,000 that's left over here in the requested budget for this next, you know, this next period. The thing about it is, and this can happen throughout these reports, because through the site, it says actual bill instead of $60,000. It's $66,395. That's what is really being spent, because a lot of stuff hadn't come in. And especially with technology, as far as computers and stuff like that, you don't go bring one back. And especially the software, in reference to the county clerk, of what they have to do. If I'm saying anything wrong, Ms. Landeren, please advise me. But understand this, that we've worked with this technology and Windows and everything else, going back through Tyler and Odyssey and all this, that it takes a year to set it up, and we don't know when it's coming in. So, and actually, right there, basically, the numbers are wrong. The numbers are wrong. And there's been some other numbers wrong in actuality. In reference to Grant Works, we had a deal come before Grant Works last week, week before, whenever it was, basically, and the numbers were malfunctioned. They were wrong. For instance, we had $19 million, basically $10 million unrestricted. Out of that $9,100 and something dollars, it was off. And therefore, that made everything change of what we were actually perceiving. Now, he came up with--
That's not correct. That was just, they'd been on board with us 30 days, 60 days. That was a report they were trying to give us to it. I called them out on it, and they said, "Oh, those aren't right. We'll get that corrected." They already--
They did correct--
They sent it back corrected. So, that never was the way it was. It was just they made a clear error.
I'm not going to argue with you in reference to that. All I know is what I got, $12 million, and it was more than that. And then the auditor found a mistake and basically said, "Hey, you need to redo these numbers," and they will redo them. And I think we had them two days later. Okay? But initially, it wasn't right. I mean, it wasn't right. Now, the gentleman over there says that we have basically capital improvement funds. I believe he said around, if I'm not mistaken, around $12 million. $12 million in reference to in capital improvement funds. Well, whatever is in there, capital improvement funds is not obligated. It is not obligated. So, whether it be 12 or 14, it kind of changes, or what's free, an example. I believe in actuality, moving around, yes, let's cut everything else we can. But in contingency, we have right at $2 million, or more than that, actually, but in contingency. What I think we need to do, and I believe it can be explained better by someone else, but we can actually, that's an expenditure from my understanding. Am I correct?
It's a budgeted potential expenditure.
That's right. It's showing it's an expenditure.
And it's in there to protect the county. We cannot spend money if we don't have a budget. And the contingencies there, we have been lucky in this community and blessed that we've not had a terrible tornado, or some of these wildfires, or some catastrophic event that happens. And we keep, that's been in there for years. We have to have money. We can't just run to the bank and get money and then take care of it. We got to have it budgeted. And so, that money has stayed in there for quite a while. It was increased a few years ago, because we had a murder trial going on with a police shooting up in Wolf City, and with other riots that had been created out of those type of activities. We didn't know what to expect. But we were ready. The sheriff's department was ready. We had people coming in from other agencies ready to help in the event we had a problem. We don't ever know. So, we got to have money there that is available. And again, it's in a deficit budget, it's not costing the taxpayers. Don't pay, when our budget is, like it's fixed to be, is proposed with a new, no new revenue rate, we're almost a $6 million deficit. That's not coming from this year's tax dollars. That's taking out previous year's tax dollars. So, that money will be spending down. The only way we can spend our fund balance down in our savings is to budget for it. And budgeting it this year at this rate, we will be lowering our fund balance by $6 million if we don't have a catastrophe. We won't have $2 million. It'll be $4 or something. And if some of the departments don't make it, and it's an over, we have more in there by another, say $2 million that they've been talking about, or $4, we still aren't taking this year's tax dollars. This is, if we can, if they spend the budget. And what concerns me about talking about going to a budget that's just so tight that nobody can operate, it will exactly prove what one of the gentlemen said at the last meeting, that they always spend their budget so they can get it in future years. Well, I can tell you, five years ago, when I got here, that's exactly the way it was, because they've been broke for a long time. We've had this growth the last five years. Most of our department heads are elected officials, and they don't always spend their budgets. They ask for it, and they know they've got it. With what's been going on here, they're all, it's already been talked about. "I'm going to spend every dollar in my budget, because y'all can't cut my budget going forward. I got to have it." So, we've sent a good message to them to say, "Be good stewards." And now, we're sending them a message, say, "Spend everything you can." So, which way is it? I mean, how do you accomplish that? You don't, huh? But I mean, that is true with a lot of governments. I promise you that they do. You budget, and they're going to spend it, because they know they can't get it. They can't keep their budget if they don't spend it. And we have stopped that. We don't have any of that. That's why you see that we don't spend all of our budget, because we got good stewards of our money. They don't, we're not wasting any money. Nobody's out here wasting money. I mean, I've got stuff in my office that I don't know that I've been there five years. And I've got paper and files and pens. I don't know how I ever use them. And that was in a lot of offices, because they were scared, because they never got any money.
Judge, I don't, I mean, I have more confidence in our department heads than that. But it is a fair point. It is something we have to guard against. But that's part of our job as commissioners of the commissioners' court, is to provide budgetary oversight as well. So, we certainly have the ability and the authority to ensure that there is not the sort of wasteful spending you're describing. My concern with this budget, and I had the same concern for last year's budget, which is why I did not approve, I did not vote for it, is that we are definitely skewing and inflating the tax rate necessarily with the approach that is being taken. We have a very high fund balance, and not to mention capital improvement and ARPA, there's money there that we can use. We need to use that to hold the tax rate as low as we can and bring it down. And I don't think, I think it's a false binary to say either we are responsible and don't tax more than we have to, or we're creating this scarcity mindset that's going to result in contrary action. I like a lot of Commissioner Monroe's recommendations. I was cheating over here. I think we have a lot of the same items on our list. You know, I presented a couple proposals already, or just lists of suggested cuts. And it was pointed out that one of them, the most recent one, which was for about 2.6 in cuts, had a lot of small items, you know, $150 here, $250 there, $5,000. I certainly don't want to say that the small numbers aren't important. I will grant that the better place to deal with that small an item would be a budget workshop for the department head right there, to make sure we're not overcutting to the point that they will have a problem providing services. But we don't need to be, we don't need to be continuing this trend of all these inflated, these inflated line items. And so, my focus, and what I hope this court will come to, is to correct, and we won't be able to do it all in one budget year, but to correct the course we've been on, and bring those line items under control to truer, more reasonable levels. And most of them are not in the general departments. It's not the clerks or anything like that. Most of them are going to be in general admin and facilities and maintenance, where we've just padded line item after line item after line item for several years now. So, we need to course correct on that. My proposal, I still have with me the, you know, the list of a bunch of smalls. I'm not throwing that out. But if we just focused on items that are $10,000 or more, and if we're willing to transfer in from capital improvement, which reduces expenditures there, takes money that's already there to keep us down, we can bridge our deficit pretty easily. So, again, and some of these are going to be the same as Commissioner Monroe's, but I'm just going to give a shorter path to correcting the overinflation, not completely, but correcting the overinflation and getting the deficit down. So, we could do that by cutting $100,000 from forensic analysis on page 23 of the budget. You could do that by cutting $30,000 from others repairing maintenance on page 27 of our workbook. This is, I'm not going to say the reason for all these, but most of them are just because they're not supported by historical trends. There's not a historical trend, there's not data to go back and say that we need that much money. So, what I'm suggesting is not the total budget. This is just an amount from the total budget to bring it down to something more in line with what we can reasonably expect to spend. So, $30,000 from others repairing maintenance, $65,000, and I have a handout. I can hand this out afterwards. I won't read it first. $65,000 from building repair and maintenance for 2507 Lee Streets, the courthouse. $30,000 from building repair and maintenance, 2700 Johnson Common Area. That's that common area outside the door. $10,000 from building repair and maintenance, 2110 Pickett Street, just down the road. $10,000 from janitorial supplies from facility and maintenance. $10,000 from building repair and maintenance, 2217 Washington Street. And then, $400,000, the entire amount of the enterprise contingency, because that is budgeted already through individual budgets for people who are utilizing enterprise for vehicles. So, that is a complete redundancy. If there's not a plan for a vehicle, then we shouldn't put it there. If there is a plan, then it should be in that budget. $20,000 for lobbying and influence out of general admin. And then, I would propose that we cut the entire $2 million of contingency from general admin from the portion that's funded by new tax revenue and transfer in that amount, or whatever amount we're comfortable with, out of capital improvement. That way, it'll fix the deficit and not fund that contingency with newly generated tax revenues, using what we've already got.
That's right.
And so, we can, it's kind of, auditors will have to do the accounting part of that, but it can absolutely be done. I've confirmed that with our auditors. I believe upon my request, they confirmed with the outside, our outside auditors, that was an acceptable practice as well. We can also cut $12,500 from court reporter services and general admin, which hasn't been used. And using the same concept, we can not only cut the capital murder expense line item, but again, we can zero that out from new property taxes and transfer in whatever amount we think is commensurate with historic trends or prudent, and from capital improvement. So, that's another $725,000 that we can cut out of the new tax revenues coming in, that portion of the budget. We can also cut 300, or transfer to general funds, such as the case may be, 300 from the contingency expenses for the exchange building. And I know this is more controversial, but we can also, we can cut, and I would suggest that we cut $2 million from the precinct road material budgets with an offset from ARPA on a $2 or $3 to $1 basis. Again, that's not going to hit the tax rate. That is money from federal government we have been taxed on in the form of inflation. Roads are one of the most important services we deliver to the county. And so, that money's sitting there. Why not use it to both control the tax rate, the new portion coming in, and provide a tangible benefit by putting it on the dab gum roads to improve them?
I would like to say something right now in reference to that. That ARPA money needs to be set aside to work on roads, but not within the budget. Therefore, because we have to show what happened to it and all this, I'm forgiving the ARPA money. I have been wanting ARPA money for our roads a long time, and in fact, asked, and we have received in the past. We need some more. But we need that in order to, for bridges, culverts, and stuff like that. We need to keep that money, not mix it up like we had the last time. Well, we didn't do it last time, and it worked out well, for the simple reason we have to be accountable. Do not cut the regular budget in reference to the precincts, but give this to the side like that has been given before. That way, we can use that and have accountability of exactly where it is. And in fact, the auditor's office, they have it already set up, because that's what we've done the last several times. We need the money. I handed out a sheet here recently in reference to $690,000, $290,000 house, where they got $970 and something, and the only-- A $290,000 house where they got 970 something, and the only amount that the precinct got was $53.75. We can't work where we have because we've had to. But we need that money, ARPA money, plus what we have in our budget. Or we'll still stay at that 53.75, okay? Also, and I do agree with him in reference to capital improvement, capital improvement funds, basically, whether it's 12 or 14 million, that's good. In fact, he even brought it up on the transfer of it. I had a question that I needed to find out that I went to the auditor's office. Based on the phone call you received yesterday from Philip Martin, this was another outside auditor, Mary wanted me to ask if that is the route the Commissioners Court decides to go, in other words, move budgetary authority from capital improvement to Fund 10, is that obtainable? And if so, what would be the best and most efficient option to use? Could funding be put in the revenue line, transfers in and out? 10,500, 2,800, 901 from capital improvement, contingency 45611, 6500, 7600, before the budget is adopted? Which a J E would need to be done, as well as to move the cash. Okay, we'd be doing away with an expenditure, basically, we'd be putting back, but we could basically, from my understanding, the 2 million that was taken out could be replaced. That would be going to the 10. Get 2 million capital improvements, transfer in and out to Fund 10. Am I correct on that? What that would do, that would show that 2 million not being... And it's not. It's sitting there. We hadn't... It's just like the gentleman said, it's been sitting there all this time. But we'd be putting something back to relocate it, but it'd be from a different line item. Am I making sense?
No.
No? Would you explain this, Stacy?
I'll let Mary explain it.
Thank you.
All right. For clarity, audit review stuff for compliance, generally accepted accounting practices. When we receive a request from the Commissioners or any other source, we go to make sure that it's compliant, that we can do it. We never influence any decisions. We are only an independent agent of Hunt County to verify that your money is spent wisely, correctly, and in compliance with all codes.
Thank you, Mary.
We've done this before. We've done this before in 7/29/20, where capital revenue was for enterprise and system. We've done it also. In other words, it can be done, it's legal. And basically, we can get back... We can cut the deficit that we are over. At this point in time, how much of a deficit do we have in reference to it? Mark? Our revenues versus our expenditures, how far are we over?
Based on the proposed budget spending, the deficit would be 5 million... 5.873 million and change. So Philip, if I could continue, I'm sorry. I'm glad for you to jump in, but I need to finish. So while those small items maybe are not gonna get us where we need to be as fast, I also think that when you look at our budgets and you look at where the smaller amounts are that we might be able to cut, they're about four... And for the public's benefit, every department has a line item, and there's a numbering system, so we can look them up. But for instance, 3110, if you know how they're numbered, you know is the operating supply line item for every budget. And our software unfortunately didn't allow me to really pull a comparative report of this, what I was hoping for. But if you look through the budgets and you look at, as I did, you go and print the year-to-date totals as of yesterday, when we're done, we're done spending for the year. There are about four line items that stood out that were primarily the most... The least used, rather, and a lot of them had 50% usage, some were 30s, some were as high as 70s, 80s, 90s percent. So it was across the board. And sometimes the larger departments have more in there, understandably. But if you look at 3110, operating supplies, 2730, training in schools, 2360 dues, and 3410, expendable equipment, what we could do is take a targeted approach instead of just a scatter shot. We're gonna go through and nickel and dime every line item. We can look at the ones that are consistently across the whole budget not being fully utilized. If we did that, and we went back, and I can, again, if the commissioners would like to oversee it, I apologize again to my report. This looks daunting, but I've highlighted just those four, three or four columns in each budget and handwritten in some numbers. And I think we could easily, between all those, make an additional cut in spending of about $135,050 from those line items. And that's not reducing anything below current year's year-to-date expenditures. And it even leaves a couple hundred bucks here or there in some of those line items over what was actually spent, just to provide a little bit of cushion. But I think whenever we have a deficit budget, like we do, it is incumbent upon us to try and get that balanced as best we can, and that includes cutting things. One of the priorities we did was our employees got a bunch of... All of our... Pretty much all the employees got a cost of living adjustment that I think was the right thing to do. I stand by that. But if we're going to have a cost of living adjustment, we know that labor is going to be the largest item or driver of our budget. So that just tells us that we're gonna have to tighten the belt in other ways to pay for that. And I think employees are happy and fine to be able to, you know, they deal with inflation better at home, and they'll use fewer pens and pencils at work, you know, to make those line items go. So I can ask Brittany to pass those out, our assistant, and give one to the auditor, please. And again, it's a lot of papers, but the line items, specific line items are highlighted. I did pass over a few. There are a couple constables and JP budgets that those people just don't have any meat on the bones of their budget, and so I skipped over them. Skipped over the auditor's budget just because, again, they're running a real lean one. There just wasn't really anything there. So, I mean, they're not really asking for increases either. So again, that's not a $725,000 item, but I think, again, we're at a point where we need to correct course on how we view our budget preparation process because that impacts our tax rates. Hey, Stacy?
I agree with what you're saying in reference to it, but basically, we need to decrease that deficit. That's what we need to do.
This does that.
And we should be able to use capital improvement money. It would be legal to take care of that, and then you're worried about, you know, basically, other capital improvements, basically, to put money back into that, but it would not be called. It'd knock out $2 million off that deficit because it would not be...
Philip, you certainly could do that. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. You certainly could do that. But I don't think the best approach to dealing with a deficit is just to throw reserves at it.
I agree.
You need to combine it with cuts.
That right there, along with the other cuts that we're able to make, I believe that would be the way to go.
Brittany, can you come here?
What we want to do is combine the effort in reference to cutting this deficit.
What Brittany is passing out now is what I was describing of kind of a shorter list of bigger items to cut to get to that. And I apologize, apparently I didn't hit save on the document before I hit print, so that line item for the capital defense fund says 350 on there, but what I wanted it to say was 725. So that's gonna mess up our numbers a little bit, but I'm sorry. And my math, I wouldn't trust my math. I think we're gonna need to have someone better look at this. But that's about... That moves a budget by about $5,712,000. That wipes out the deficit almost entirely.
Your $2 million that you're pulling from the precincts, how is that gonna affect the deficit budget?
It's gonna reduce...
By reducing our budget, even though you're saying put contingency money back in there, how is that gonna reduce?
What I would... I mean, we can... There's multiple ways to skin that cap. We could use capital improvement money for the offset, or what I was thinking was to use ARPA. And I was thinking something... I was thinking about 6 million. So that's why I say a two to one or three to one replacement on those numbers cut from the budget. And the reason for that is not just because that's most of the ARPA money that's available, but it's because we're gonna... It's gonna take us a couple years, a few years, to spend all that, our portion of that, which of us, you know, 6 million, that'd be split four ways. So that's gonna be a good chunk of change, and for us to responsibly spend that, I know we all will, it's gonna take a couple years. And so over the... To address the concern, which is a reasonable one and well-founded, that we're kind of putting ourselves in a hole for future budgets, by taking this capital improvement money in that amount, anticipating using it over the next two to three years, that gives us two to three years to organically get our budget back up to where it needs to be from the new revenue that's coming in from the growth in the county.
Mark, I... And the road materials and cutting y'all's budget, that does not help Fund 10. Y'all have your own tax rate, you have your own budget. It has nothing to do with the $6 million approximately deficit budget. That's totally out of the spectrum of what we're talking about.
Can those tax rates be recalculated and shifted?
If that's what y'all wanna do with y'all's tax rate, yes, you can. But y'all have a tax rate, just like, I mean, you're part of the total tax rate, but y'all's budget stand alone. And so, and you talk about the ARPA funds. I don't think we have that much ARPA funds. It's not restricted. We have some, yes, but I know we still have some because in talking to the grant works people about putting in Hill, which is what the capital improvement is in the budget is over there, money is over there for, is because this court voted unanimously to buy the land. They unanimously voted to hire architects to design facilities, to move people out of the buildings they're currently in to get us more room. And this court voted to move 15 million out of the fund balance to capital improvements. So if we're just gonna stop that project, then you've still gotta spend money because we've got... There's no way we can keep voters down where they are. That building's terrible, it's too small, the water leaks, we got a million and a half dollars' worth of equipment in there that's not really protected from weather. We don't have a choice. Some of these things, we don't have a choice on. And I think we're doing a big old exercise, and you're getting us back to the same place. And I said it a minute ago. The public has said, you have put out, that we have too much money and we ought to spend it down. The budget, currently with a deficit budget, will do the same thing as moving money out of capital improvement, which is already Fund 10 money too. It's in our cash balance, our fund balance. So it's already pulling it down without having to do all this moving things back and forth. Leave a deficit with... If you want some of these cuts, if that's what y'all wanna do. I disagree with the road and materials. I don't think you should do that. I think y'all should leave it alone. You shouldn't be cutting your budget when you're sitting here telling me how terrible the roads are, and these people are telling us how bad the roads are. Why would you wanna cut your budget on roads and cut your tax rate on roads when you know you got a problem? I don't understand that. But it's a lot simpler to leave a deficit budget. It will accomplish the same thing. If y'all wanna reduce some of the expenditures, you know, that's okay, but there's some here that you have that I don't think is a smart thing, i.e. capital murder. I've already told you, I know that we have one capital murder that was sentenced to death. He's in the state system, but it caused an automatic appeal. And we have to pay for the attorneys to do the appellate work, and that process has just started. And I don't know... They don't know what it's gonna cost. I think we've got three that are in jail charged with murder, have not escalated to capital murder, but they could be at any time. Is that right? And we got three, I've told by one of the judges...
Judge, I didn't propose not having anything in capital improvement. I propose cutting the portion of it that's funded by new taxes and doing a transfer in from taxes, from money that's already in here.
There's not... The money that's in capital improvements is in capital improvement. It's not growing because of taxes. The capital improvement money was taken out of fund balance. Our fund balance is what has been generated over many, many years. You know, when I got here, it was 18, 19 million dollars was our fund balance. Now it's 20...
Sorry.
With 20...
23.
23 or 24. So in fact, let me finish. I'll let you talk. So it's not new... We're not... The capital improvement budget is not growing. It's got its own fund, and it's not growing in taxes. It's what we've set aside from monies that we had. So you're not... I mean, moving things back and forth isn't solving the problem. It gets basically the same place, what I'm saying. If we get... If we spin down the budget, and I hear what people are saying, there is some places where you can, but it's hard for... I don't wanna sit up here and vote for some of these cuts you're talking about when I know that a lot of the things are gonna happen. I mean, you've got the... You said something about the commons areas down here. Was it 30,000 bucks or something? 10. But we're trying to repair that gazebo down there. It's about to fall over. We've been trying to do it for years.
It's not the line item for it. That's not the line item for it. It's back outside those doors.
Well, I think my last old boy scouts built it. That is where our master gardeners work out of. They have events down there.
The Heritage Garden, I believe, has its own line item. You're referring to building repair and maintenance for 2700 Johnson Street Common, which is this building, that common area.
Not on Washington Street. I'm talking about the 2217 Washington Street, $10,000. Yes.
Okay.
And facility. So if you're... I looked at that wrong, I'm sorry. I thought you said something earlier about the common area, and I thought you were talking about there, and if you were talking here, I apologize, I misunderstood. But the building in Washington, those... That all money split between... That building split between ag life and voters. And it's always having problems. We got a problem down there they're trying to fix, and they can't... They haven't got a solution to fix it right now. And with the capital murder, I don't think that's a good idea. We don't know how many capital murders we're gonna have, and I know we've already got a... I know we got expenses that are coming in. I explained it several meetings ago. We have filed that appeal, and when the judge hired another firm that was certified for appellate work, and he did the work and got paid, and then after the fact, then they decertified him to be in appellate work, and so far, the judge is still accepting it, but he could anytime to get kicked out, and we may have to pay another one to do the work. And then we still gotta go through the whole process. We don't know how much it'll take, how long it'll take, but it's all automatic on a death penalty case. And we have murderers in our jail, and a lot of these budgets are... And we have murderers, murderers in our jail, and a lot of these budgets are all the same. I know y'all, it's easy to say they're all skewed and they're all too high, but we don't ever know what's going to happen to us. I mean, you want to cut all the facilities?
We've got 23,48 million dollars in the.
Let me finish. We've got a courthouse that'll be 100 years old and 29. And it's always, I mean, something go wrong with it. This building was built and came into service in 81, I believe it was. We got a jail over there that came into service in '01, and it's falling down. We're fixing to have to spend, we've got an engineer's report that says we have to put support up on the east end because the east wall is leaning out. We got to put, put some, the way they're talking, we're going to pour some piers, put some pipe up, leaning against the wall. We don't have the design yet, but that's going to cost us some money. And we need a new jail, and we need more space. And it's, you know, financially, we're in such good shape, we're going to a no new revenue rate. We can work really hard next year and do a better job of doing all of these cuts and airing down the budget. I have no problem with that. You know, it's, it's a, it's a major task to do it with the software we have. We don't have any management reports with our software. You can't do any analysis with our software. And you know that, you've tried to experience it. It's hard to take a budget this size and not be, and be able to do it, do the kind of details that some are talking about. And, but I, again, I have no problem approving the budget as is with some cuts, let the deficit budget bring down the cost. If y'all want to put more money in out of ARPA, we can have that at a different meeting. It's not really part of this. We can sure it's not on the agenda to do anything with the ARPA funds. So I'm not sure we should even be talking ARPA funds when it's not part of our budgetary process. But I just, I don't object to that. Only thing I object to is make sure we spend it the correct way. And I just think the shortcut is to make a few of the cuts if you want to and leave it alone. And we'll spend it down and, and we'll be in the same boat as most of the, most everything you're suggesting of moving money around is getting us back to the same place.
My question on that right there, is part of that, Mark, is part of that, is part of your deal basically using capital improvement monies in order to help us out there? Because that capital improvement is not obligated, and it can be basically put back in from another one. Our deal is to try to close that deficit. I tell you what, Nick picking a bunch of this stuff, well, a good example is what I gave a while ago. The money's out there. I had to carry over some money one year because the pickup was ordered and they hadn't gotten in because they didn't have chips. So we carried the money over because as soon as they come in, I got it. And that's what's involved in this. We never know. And unless you go ask each individual on that piece of paper, you don't know what they've got hanging on because they can't get it. So basically, I'm still in reference to trying to get some of it knocked down through capital improvement. This budget is more important than a building. That building needs to be built, yes, but it doesn't have to be built right now. We paid for it within the last year or so. We went out and we're ready in reference to jails, building jail and all this, but basically that's far up to the, in my opinion, is up for the people to say, yes, we want it, we need to afford a bond and reference to it or whatever. But as far as us trying to go out and trying to build a building with extra money that we supposedly have, that's not the right thing. It's not right.
Phil, again.
If, if the court doesn't want to cut $10,000 for repairs and maintenance for the common area, that's, that's fine. But, but again, that was not cutting the whole budget. That one was for, budgeted 40,000, and it's been, we didn't spend anything on it this year, zero. So that's 40,000 unused. And 22, 23, we spent $3,720, and in 21, 22, we spent 17,41. So if there is a need for this or there or anywhere to do a major improvement, that's fine. I'm totally in favor of that. That gazebo is falling apart. I've taken pictures and, out of alarm. But the point for saying that is to, is to just highlight, we're not talking about pauper status here. We're talking about a course correction. It's not all going to happen this year. Unlikely. And you, yes, we can do better next year, but it's not too late to do better this year. And.
Mark.
The reason I am proposing the way I am, as opposed to just taking fund balance money and throwing it at the budget, is because I'm thinking about next year's tax rate and the year after that. That is the concern here. I, I'm not saying the deficit doesn't matter, but the discipline and the exercise of arriving at a responsible balanced budget is the most important thing. Everybody in this room and everybody I talked to are reasonable people, and they understand, hey, if you've got to keep the gazebo down there from falling apart and hurting somebody, fine, that's no problem. They, they understand that. But what they don't understand is all the extras in here that we're not spending, we don't have any basis to think we're going to spend it. And we're not going to be able to suss it all out in one budget. That should have been started months ago. So yeah, we're going to have to compromise on that a little bit and, and come back next year and, and go, go there. But there's just, there's just millions here. We can, we can do better.
Mark, I'm not arguing that there's not some things we can cut. I didn't say that. I'm saying that moving the money around is, is, doesn't change the financial situation we're in. It's easier to leave it as it is, let fund 10, fund balance take care of it and leave the other over there. You don't have to swap them back and forth. That's, it's, it's just taking money out of one pocket and putting it in the other. It's not changing our financial position. I misspoke, I said on the common area, you know, the utility facilities maintenance, I mean, there's no question that they haven't spent all their money. But it's just been in the last few months to a year that we finally got fully staffed. We had two positions open for three years. We couldn't hire anybody. We had, we had projects just like, again, I'll go back to the gazebo. That was planned to be fixed two or three years ago. We couldn't hire the staff to accomplish the projects and things that needed to be fixed. We have just now got to that point to where we've got the staff to start doing some of these things. And so you, I feel like you have to take into consideration what has been going on. You just can't say, well, historically, we hadn't spent it. Well, why haven't we spent it historically? Is there a reason? Well, there is a reason.
And that's why.
We have not been full, we have not been fully staffed in any department up here until about the last year, when we finally got pay scales where we could hire people. A lot of the jobs that were open are skilled people, and they're not working for what we were paying. And, you know, our benefit package, I'll tell you, I'm, I agree with everybody, it's too high. But nothing we can do about it. It's set from what I'm being told. So doesn't, you know, there's not a whole lot there that we can do. But we still, people have to have money to live on. And that's what we've been doing, is trying to get people that will come work for us. And we've got them, the morale is good, particularly over at the sheriff's office in jail. You know, we, we got the best report we've ever had on our jail this year from the state. In the state, we were out of compliance for five years. The past sheriff and I got called down to Austin in front of the jail commission and told us we had to get that thing fixed or get out. And it was in that bad a shape, and we had that many reports. We have, they have worked really hard over there, and we got a glowing review for the first time ever, and we're still trying to buy life to that thing. Because it is in, it's in, it's a badly constructed building that moves all the time. And thankfully, we have a sheriff now that will let inmates work, and they're over there putting lipstick on that pig all the time, fixing cracks and painting and, and doing the things to keep it where at least it looks okay. It's not okay, but it looks okay to, to inspection by our inspectors, so.
Judge, I, sorry.
I just, you know, again, I think, I don't, you know, the contingency number, I think we have to have a contingency. We can't spend if we don't. Some of these others, you know, the 2 million you got for road materials, that just won't even fly. So unless y'all want to reduce y'all's budgets and, and cut your tax rate, and that's up to y'all. But I would, I would, I would propose that we pick out some of these that are absolutely out. The Enterprise, the 400,000 Enterprise, that money's been budgeted that way because we were trying to replace the old, old vehicles we had. And we've had trouble with getting them, and we order them, we don't always get them. So, and we don't know how much to budget for them until we get the car done. So we either have to budget too much in line on them or just put it there, and then we let, we get the vehicle, we get the Enterprise papers, then we do it, and then we move that money over into the budgets. We could, we could do it the other way, it just makes it, we're going to have to budget higher. So we just budget with that way. I don't have any problem lowering that. I know we need a few vehicles, but those can wait for, you know, next year, and we can put it in a budget a different way. But I'd say, I don't make some reasonable numbers out of that and leave the, leave the rest of the budget correct, and we'll pull down our, our fund balance the same way as moving money from capital improvement over and just making it confusing.
While you're talking about that and reference to it, basically, we took Enterprise funding from capital improvement several times. Yes?
Judge, I have not proposed having no contingency. I have not proposed having no capital murder budget. I have proposed that we don't fund it with new taxes and proposed a method for addressing that, if you would like to address it a different way. That's something to consider. As far as Enterprise goes, again, we, we have not, I looked at it today. I actually was wrong when I spoke about our expenditures out of contingency in previous times. I, for whatever reason, mentally just added a zero onto it. I thought we'd spent about 500,000 out of a contingency. We'd only spent 56,000 out of a $2 million contingency line item. And now we're going to add another contingency just for vehicles we might need? That's, that's not responsible. It's not necessary.
I said, Mark, just now, I said, we can, we can take that out, we can wait. That, that doesn't bother me. But, but what I'm telling you is that the moving money from capital improvements to offset a contingency is the same as if it's left like it is right now, and we'll spend down the, the fund balance that way. Either way, it's going to get us to the same point. It's, it's A or B, and, and both of them equal C. I mean, it doesn't matter. Capital improvement money is tied to 10, so whether you move it over into it, it's still calculated as our total fund balance. Those two numbers are added together to give us our fund balance. So reducing capital, the capital improvement budget, taking money out of it, taking money out of its fund balance increases our fund balance over here, and then at the end of the day, they're, they're still equal. It's still doing the same thing.
Which fixes the deficit. Because the capital, capital improvement funds coming in are revenue.
Well, you still, either way, you're spending the same money, Mark. It's still, the only way we can pay for the budget, if it's in a deficit or do what you're doing, you're taking and budgeting fund balance money that's not taxpayer money, that's in capital improvement. It's not, it is past, it was past tax money. It is, but it's not current. Let me say that correctly. It's current, it's not current.
I understand what you're saying, Judge.
And it, so it's not, I mean, we've got not current money over here and not current money over here, so we're going to take not current money over here to pay for not current money over here. It just, it, it's a step we don't have to take, is all I'm saying.
I understand what you're saying. I just, I don't think it's the best approach, but we can, we can agree to disagree on that. But all that money in capital improvement right now, you said earlier that we had approved moving office buildings. We have not approved no such thing.
I didn't say we approved them. I said, we have voted to buy the land, we voted to hire architects, and we voted to move the money over. I did not say we approved. I said, that's what we have done.
We, we are just now beginning to get the information we need to make decisions about that project. And we desperately need to develop a capital improvement plan, which I've said multiple times over the last several weeks. So, I mean, that is, we're not going to develop one today. But I, I just, I just disagree, Judge. The point of the exercise is to balance the budget as opposed to just having a deficit and to take that money from someplace it, it doesn't need to be, if it's not attached to any kind of a plan or, or even invoices or estimates or anything, it's just sitting there. And it needs to be back into fund balance. But for purposes of today's budget, it can, it can just cure the deficit. Jeff, you've been waiting for a while.
Oh, you kept me standing.
All right. I've enjoyed the conversation. Jeff Phillips, 603 Mead Drive.
Okay. Sorry. Well, give us just a minute. Let me, wait just a second if you would. All right. Is any, did, before we go back and open, probably anybody else got a comment they want to say anything else?
What I'd like to see is pull some of the deficit down. I don't know how we're going to get there, but there's, whether we take it out of contingency or whatever we do, knowing that we can take, whether we just leave capital improvement where it is, leave it at 12 million, but take some of this contingency and stuff and these other cuts out of the proposed budget to get the debt, to close the deficit. And then if we get in a circumstance where we have to, we have a building fall apart, we have three murders happen or whatever happens, we still have a place to go to that $12 million on capital improvement fund, pull the money out and pay for it, still take care of it. And that lowers the deficit down on, on this budget.
You're saying 2 million out of contingency, put in number 10 and 2 million capital improvement.
Hang on a second. Mary? Can we, can we move, would that work, moving it out of capital improvement that it's in its own fund now? Because they're both tied together. If we, if we have to pull it out to take care of contingency, is that a legal expense?
Yes. My understanding from our, our outside auditor, we raised this question not knowing what the court would present today, so that we can make sure that we in good faith could say, yes, this can be done. It is compliant, it is in accordance with generally accepted accounting practices. It has been done in prior years. So we've documented, we have accounts set up, this can be transferred.
Okay. Thank you.
So what, what was it again, David?
What, what I was, what I've mentioned is on, to get the deficit, I don't know if we can get it all the way zeroed, balanced, but if we can take some of this contingency out of here that we haven't been using, we still, and we, to help balance the budget out, we still have $12 million in capital improvement that we are able, say all the buildings break and there's three murders or everything breaks loose that we've been planning for, that we're hoping not going to happen, and say it does happen. We still, say we take $4 million out of this budget, we have $12 million over here in capital improvement. If we take, have to use $4 million of it, we still have $8 million in the capital, capital improvement budget. So it's not, we're not going to put anybody in a bind far as the county or the taxpayers.
That's right.
And I don't know how we can get there, and like I said before, I don't understand 100% of the budget, but I do know that we need to do something to get it more to a balanced budget with the amount of money that we got with, for the taxpayers. I think we need to be better stewards.
Anybody else? I'll open it back up to public comments. Sorry about that, Jeff. Trying to keep it straight.
We'll be fine. Jeff Phillips, 603 Mead Drive. I just want, listening to you guys talk, it's not, I know that leaving the things the way that you're suggesting makes it easier to do your job. Understand that, get it 100%. However, the budget that you adopt affects the tax rate. So we want a budget that accurately reflects the spin that's going on in the county, not the what ifs. We can talk all day long about something that will happen, but I always like to say, let's just be, let's plan for the 85%. Let's be directionally correct, and when the disaster happens, we'll do what we need to actually take care of that, you know, disaster. And that's what contingency's for, for capital improvement, what you're talking about. The money's already there. But if you reset the lines, that affects our rate that we pay. And that's why we want that to more accurately reflect the spend that's actually taking place. We're not act, I'm not even saying cut a line, I'm just saying move it to what the spend has been. And then some of these other suggestions, you know, go on top of that. That helps us. Again, not gonna be very popular here, but I haven't heard anything about payroll. Uh, I'm sure there's a cost of living increase, I don't know if it's 5%, 3%, whatever it is. Um, if you can't find it in these line items, you need to find it there. So, my, my son is here, or he was, back here. You know, we own a small business here in town. As a business owner, he's not getting a raise this year, neither am I, because expenses are high and we still have to take care of our employees. I understand taking care of employees, but also, as people that run businesses, we're hurting too. You know? And if I can save a couple hundred bucks on a tax bill that I'm gonna pay on my properties downtown, that's awesome. You know, he might be able to go, you know, eat at one of the downtown, you know, restaurants as, as well. So, you need, if you can't find it in the line items, that's the easy place to find them. Then you need to say, okay, let's move from 5% to 4%. What does every 1% increase save on the budget?
1% is 5.
I, I don't know if you guys know this, though. If it's a 5, if it's a 4% increase instead of a 5% increase, what does that reduce the budget? I would rather you not go there, but if you can't balance in other ways, maybe you do need to go there. And, and county employees get a 4% increase instead of a 5% increase. Because that extra increase, it's, it's taken out of our paychecks. You know, we, we, we all need to share the tightening of the belt, right?
Tell me this, I've got a question in reference to this. If we have money set aside for capital improvement, basically, and it's not obligated, and it's sitting there, basically, uh, why would you be, or are you against moving to where we can shorten that deficit?
I, I, I'm not saying I'm against it. What I'm saying is, you have line items that are inflated. Right size those line items, if you can use money that's already been collected from the taxpayers to offset something, that's, that's y'all's job. Y'all can do that. I'm just saying, put a budget in place that we can trust. That's, 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 that's what I'm saying. Put a budget in place that reflects the spend of the county. I don't wanna take a percent from county employees, they work hard. But if you can't balance a budget, maybe that's what you need to do. Is that my three minutes? Okay.
Daniel Ledford, 1825 FM 36 North. I was hoping I wasn't gonna have to say anything, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this. First Thessalonians 5:22 says, stained from all appearance of evil. Because of the way you're going about this, you appear evil. I don't believe one of you guys are evil. But because of the way you're doing this, that's why everybody's here. I mean, I bet y'all ain't had this many in a meeting, other than their night meetings, since this thing started. And, and that's why people are here, cause they don't trust you no more. All right? Because you no longer appear honorable. You appear evil. And I, I've talked to every one of you guys, I've got to talk with every one of you over the last three meetings, and I believe you're all good guys. I really do. I don't think you're doing your job well, but I believe you're, you're good guys. Uh, I believe these two guys have really put some effort into it. I think you have. I ain't heard much from you. Um, and I think you've put some effort into it, but guys, you gotta get this thing done. And, and when, here's the thing, this, Mark's right, it makes our rate higher. I know it makes your job easier on leaving the deficit. Deficit don't sound good, cause here's what we think about, when, when we, as normal people, hear the word deficit, we think about 30 something trillion dollars our federal government is doing to us, and we know our kids are gonna be paying for that. And when we hear the word deficit, and I know that's not what, the way that works, but when we hear that, that's what we think, and that's not good. So, it doesn't make you look good. And so, you guys, you need to get that thing down there and get it, you need to balance it. You can do it. And if you, and I've heard enough here, between this man, this man, and this man, they have had enough that you could balance the budget with no problem. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Well, I, you know, I appreciate your comment. Anybody else, I'm sorry? Not a closed public hearing. So, I mean, what Mark is proposing is 5.8, which he thinks that gets us to, I guess, the exact number. I don't, you've got 5.8 there, so I assume that's the deficit. You're proposing with your cuts, so if you take out the 200 for road materials that's not in this budget, you're proposing 3.873, really, which would leave still a $2 million deficit, if we, if we did all of those. So, I, I have, if, I have no issue if we wanna reduce or cut the, the 100,000 at the top on forensic, uh, the 400 on the enterprise, if you wanna cut that, that's fine. And the 2 million contingency, if you wanna take that out, that's fine. I don't think the court reporter services, capital murder expenses, I don't think we should touch those, cause we don't, we haven't spoken to any of the judges or know anything about what's happening. I know that one of the judges told me that, don't mess with their budget, they, they need what they've asked for. So, I'm not, I don't think that that's a good move. Uh, again, you got 300,000 in the contin, uh, in contingency expense for the exchange building, which again, it's got its own revenue, it has no tax revenue. The exchange building is totally in its own account, and it's paid for with the leases that other agencies pay us. That building is fully funded by city agreement releasing the floors, the, the state rents four floors from us, and North Texas Central cog rents a floor from us. It's generating the money to take care of all of it. So, it's not in, that, the 300's not in our budget. It doesn't help the budget we're talking about. So, uh, I would, I would make a motion that we approve the budget by striking, uh, the, cutting 100,000 out of forensic, uh, analyst, 400 out of the enterprise, 2 million out of contingency, which will be... Two, yeah, just, I'm looking, make sure I didn't miss something else. Two, 2.5. And, and I make a motion that we approve the, uh, budget with... We have one other thing we needed to do with the budget?
The county department?
No, I'm talking about something else that we needed to add. We took care of it with the, uh, employee, or the retirees, we got that taken care of. Okay. Just making sure I don't forget anything. Uh, so those are the four larger things on this list that I would recommend that we, uh, all right, I'll make a motion that we approve the budget as it is with the cut, with the exception of cutting 100,000 out of forensic analyst, 400,000 out of enterprise, 2 million out of the contingency, as proposed there, which, I don't know where that gets us to on it, but then, again, we can spend down if, the rest of it, if it happens, we'll spend down our, our budget still. It gets us closer to being a, closer to a balanced budget.
Well, we're gonna take that 2 million out of the contingency and, uh, bas, basically, put in number 10, and then the 2 million, uh, capital improvement transferred back in?
No, I don't see any reason to do that, yours, it's all in the same money, it doesn't make any sense to do that.
Does that affect our rate?
No, it doesn't. It doesn't affect your rate at all.
Do you approve budget, it affects our rate?
It, it's, it won't, it won't affect the rate.
On these, like the ones that I proposed, like taking some more of the, the money out of the, uh, on facilities and things like that, if we take that out, that number was $3,855,306. And if we take that out of those, uh, for the facilities and stuff, we still have the capital improvement account that we can, if all disaster hits, we still can pull out of that.
Well, that's, that's why I was taking out, I took the contingency, 2 million contingency out of the general administration fund, and I, that got it down to 2.5. And the 2 million that Mark is proposing out of road materials doesn't affect this budget, the 300 contingency out of exchange building doesn't affect this budget, and, uh, was there one other? No, 2.3 of it, 2.3 of his proposal would've got us to, uh, really was only 3.5.
But if we pull the rest out of the facility, down page 28, that gives it all.
Oh, that orphan, we got.
All right, your, your proposal? Your proposal for 27?
Yeah.
Page, what page number?
On, what I was talking about is, on the, we got the forensic, we know that, well, then on 27 and 28, on, and 29, in the, the buildings, the, the requested budget that we have for building repairs, if you add that in there, and then the enterprise, the 400, we said that's okay, the 2 million contingency, uh, if we do the murder and the software upgrades, that was $3,855,306. But if we, if that, if those hurt us, we still have, if we get in a bind and overspend or have, emergency comes up, we can still pull out of that cap, capital improvement.
Well, I, I may, I'm being told by the judges that capital murder expenses are, are ongoing. We can't cut it to zero, so is 350, is what, does that leave any funds? I'm not looking at this.
It was, uh, requested was 725,000.
We're cutting 350 of it?
Even if you take 325, it's gonna leave 400 in there.
Okay, well, I'm, that's okay then. I, I thought that was taking it all out.
You're cutting how much out of this?
That was, that's my number, that 3.855, 306, was taking 725,000 out of that, but I didn't know how much they needed up in there.
So, read your list again for me, please.
Okay, on page 23, the forensic, it was 100,000 requested, and we haven't used any year-to-date. And then facilities, on page 27, 8, and 9, we had, uh, 325,163, and then we had 88,984 that was, or, they requested, let me back up, on 27 and 28, we requested 617,000. Year-to-date, we've used 291,837, so that, we're over on that one, 325,163. On page 29, on facilities, we had 608,000 requested, 519,016 year-to-date, so we're over 88,984. And then on the enterprise, we were 400,000, year-to-date, zero. On contingency, we're 2 million, and year-to-date, we're at 56,856 on that. On the murder, we're at 725, year-to-date, we've used 163,341. And then on page 40, with the software, hardware, and then the repairs, and then the upgrade on the computers, and like I say, I don't know, know it's about computers, I'm just looking at numbers. On the first line, we requested 368,000, and we've used, year-to-date, 209,842. Second line, we requested 135,750, we've used, year-to-date, 30,823. On upgrades, we've requested 208,000, and we, year-to-date, we've used 114,634. And then on page, uh, 44, let me figure out what that was. That was expendable tools and equipment, that's, that was on the voter, at voters admin, she had said that she's gonna buy half of those in next year, or the year after the budget. But we requested 112,675, year-to-date, we've used 32,770. Well, if you take the requested and the year-to-date, that leaves 3,855,306. So, if we cut these items, whether we cut them all, or if we cut them down a percentage, or whatever we do, we're still looking at 3,855,306. What I was saying is if we just go ahead and take, cut all that out of the budget, and just hope that we don't have any murders, or we don't have any repairs on the facilities, whatever. But if we do, all this does happen, and we have to spend 3 point me, 3, 3,855,306. We have 12 million in capital improvement, we can go to that budget, to that capital improvement and move 4 million out of that, so we're not hurt, cause you're still leaving 8 million in capital improvement.
Mary or Stacy, do, particularly on facilities, are there any outstanding POs that work likely to be finished next year, or, anybody know?
The one that's needing to be issued for the building?
For now, we got the one, but that's, that was 10,000 bucks or something.
26, but.
Was it 26?
Yeah, but there's still.
I thought, maybe all they needed was 10 more or something out of their budget, I think's what I was thinking about.
But they even left this.
Well, I just want, are, are we sure there's no other POs?
I would have to check the code, I would not get it complicated.
Can you, Bernice, can you tell if you have access to that on yours? All I'm saying is on the facilities, if we got POs out that we're already doing a project, I, I don't wanna cut too much out of it if we don't, if we got an ongoing project.
And out of 3, 3,855,306, even if we take and leave 855,000 in those line items, we're still ahead 3 million, so that's got us a little over halfway out of that.
All right, well, I'll withdraw my motion. And if you wanna clean up and make a motion, you're welcome to. You're gonna have to be specific on each, I guess each line item number, or, to make sure if you're cutting any different line items. You got the line item number over on the, or on one sheet I'm looking at, I'm not looking at what you got, David?
We've got three different, four different sheets, and which one are we using?
I don't, I don't have one from David, so I don't.
You wanna talk about more cuts before I make the motion to approve?
It's, I just.
Okay. Let me read them real quick.
See, are you gonna read them as part of a motion, or are you gonna read them as, just to give us one more opportunity to understand?
I'm gonna give them to you as one more opportunity.
Okay.
Okay, on page 23, line item, do we need, did the whole number, 621?
No, 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 you, only on the numbers when you make the motion. Uh, you don't have to tell us right now on that.
On the, on page 23, it was, on balance was 100,000, if we, if we take out that 100,000?
Would you move that speaker closer to you, please? Thank you.
On page 23, under forensic analysis, take that 100,000 out. Then on 20, page 27, under, do I need to read off all the different buildings?
No, if you just give a total for, of that for now.
The totals on page 27 and 28 on facilities, 617,000. And then on page 29, on facilities, on the utilities, uh...
Commissioner McRae?
Ma'am?
I'm sorry, your mic's not on.
No?
No, it's not on. Okay.
Is it on?
Yeah.
There you go, sorry. Page 23. There you go. Sorry. Page 23, 100,000. On 27 and 28, take out, out of facilities, 617,000. Or, I'm sorry, that's the requested. Take out 100,000 on forensic, out of facilities, from page 27 and 28, take out 325,163 dollars. On page 29, on facilities, take out 88,984 dollars. On page 38, enterprise, take out 400,000. Uh, page 38, out of a contingency, take out 2 million. On, uh, page 38, on the murder, we had, uh, take out, uh, what was remaining there was, uh, 561, 659. And then on, uh, page 40, for software repair, we had 158, 158 left. And then on the hardware repair, we had 104,927 that wasn't spent. Take that out. And then for upgrades, on page 40, we had 93,366 dollars. Take that out. And then on page 44, that was the voters', uh, machines. Let's take out 79,905 dollars. You put those totals together, that's 3,855,306 dollars. Like I said, I don't know if we can cut all of that out, but if we don't feel good taking all of it out, even if we leave 855,306 dollars in there, we've still taken 3 million dollars out of the budget.
David, I'm, I'm okay with everything except the murder and the voter side of it. I'm a little concerned in cutting it that much.
And I'm a little worried about the software and hardware. I don't, I don't, I don't, I know that, uh, the courts had a $60,000 request for some new software, and that they need. I, I don't know how much is, or if, what is the total budget on the software in that, David?
Uh.
That you're talking?
3, 368,000. And then one was, that's for software repair, and then hardware repair, or hard repair, was 135,750. And then upgrades, 208,000.
So you're cutting all of it, or you're just reducing it?
That's what I was saying. I don't think we can cut all of it. But if we cut, you know, all of those numbers together were, was 3,855,306. That's what I say. If we leave 855,000, wherever we plug these back in to these balances, we still have 3 million out of the budget, that we cut out of budget.
Have, have you got that all written out, David?
Yes, sir. I don't know if you could read it, but I've got it.
I was gonna suggest somebody run and get us a copy of it.
Okay. Well, just kinda looking at these numbers right quick. If you left, uh.
We, we got a copy right there.
Okay.
Thank you. Whoa. Thank you.
I'm not texting. I'm on my calculator here. Okay. What, what we can do on there, if you wanna leave money in there and not take out the whole 3,855,000, in, uh, in that capital murder, we could leave 437,000 in that one. And then, uh, in your, all in the software, you can still leave, uh, you can leave 158,000 in the software. You can leave 105,000 in the hardware. In the upgrades, if you left 94,000 in there. And then in the voter's admin, you leave the 80,000 in that one. And that number is gonna be, that's gonna be that 855,000, I believe.
All right. Um.
That actually brings it up, taking out 874,000.
So.
Another way you could do it, Judge, is if, like, that number there's 3,855,306, if we just wanna leave, go in and leave the, uh, like, the difference of where the year-to-date is from the requested, and then just leave the whole 725,000 in the murder, that gets you to 3,130,306 dollars.
So we still cut? Yeah. I, I understand what you're saying, but, uh, my concerns are, particularly, you know, like, hardware. I know we replace X amount of hardware every year to keep current, and so they can't, they, there's no way to replace all of the hardware in all, in all the offices ever in, at one time. So they rotate all of it. So I don't know why that was lower this, why their spending was lower this year unless they had some trouble not getting it and all. So I, I'd hate to cut it, you know.
That, that's what I mean. We, I know we probably can't cut it all the way out.
That's what I'm saying. We need to figure out what's, what's reasonable. I, I don't, uh, the murder at 450, I think, I mean, with having the, uh, I mean, if we're gonna use it the other way with capital improvement, that's fine. Uh, we can still protect them. I, the, uh, um, the software, uh, I, I probably wouldn't go below, uh, they requested 368. I'd probably just cut it like 68 and leave them 300 for software. Because I know we've got some update, or some renewals coming up that have gone up on some of the software. I know that, that court systems are being required, or have requested at least a new software package to help them with that. That's $60,000. So I don't, I don't, I think they'll probably spend theirs. Uh, you know, if you wanted to cut it to 350, again, without being able to talk to them, uh, in the hardware, if you wanna go to 125,000 in, in the upgrades, uh, I, I, if you wanna cut that a little bit, but, you know, without, I just know what, how IT operates, and they have everything on a routine where it, it changes all the time with, with their rela, re-leasing and their, and, uh, new fees for, for the leases on the software. Um.
David, what was your number on the facilities that you suggested?
Well, if we, that's what I'm saying. I don't know what, that's what we needed to look at, what we could adjust it to. I was just given, if you went from requested to year-to-date, was, there was still 325,000 in there that we haven't used. And like I said, I don't know if we can cut all these down to zero. I'm just saying, if you wanted to go in here and cut all of these down to zero, those balance numbers was 3,855,306 dollars that we could take out of the budget. And if all of these, we still needed these numbers in here, we could pull money out of capital improvement to fund, to fund these. If everything did happen, you know, buildings fell down, and we need vehicles, and, you know, murder cases, so on and so forth. I was just trying to find ways to cut the budget and to make it work. Those were big-ticket items that I found.
Gentlemen, I would also like to add into the hopper for consideration. I brought this up at our last meeting, uh, budget meeting. But if we were to, I think we need, if we were to cut from the sheriff's budget, don't worry, Sheriff.
He got a gun, you know.
Jail, from their expendable equipment request, there are 25 portable XL 95P BLK radios, and 15 portable XL 200P radios. If we were to cut those line item requests in the amount of 117,587.25, we could pay for that out of ARPA instead. Um, so we can get that to them, and also.
What radios were, Sheriff, what radios is that in reference to?
Now, you gotta come to the mic. Chad, one of you, who are you gonna talk?
This isn't, uh, this, it could be if we had the money in the office. I believe we have seven.
That's already been cut. I don't know. I'm Chad Stroud, jail administrator. Uh, I thought that was already cut. On my expendable equipment, I'll get the numbers, but it's right at 33,000, I believe. Let me get my numbers.
Were these the radios that were supposed to be used in the jail, or where?
That was, I think that's part of this other radio stuff that y'all are, have been doing on the other part. It's.
Is it part of the new system, is what he's, what he's asking? Okay.
Originally, I think we had asked for that, but then the, the chief ended up cutting that back out because it went under something else.
Okay. Well, I guess the numbers I have aren't updated for me yet, because there's also, damn it, they're, they're still showing on my, on my end. I'm not blaming you, just saying.
Right. I think if you look at the proposed budget that was sent out by the auditor's office, it's only showing, um, I don't have it in front of me, but the, I think my expendable equipment was gonna be right at 33 or 20, 23.
23,000.
Yes.
Was that part of the ARPA funding, or was it, what was that coming out of?
Now, this is, it's in the budget. I, I got an email late Wednesday afternoon after I was gone from Buddy, and I didn't see it until today. Uh, Buddy requested under line item, out of the jail, uh, ending in 2235, software repair and maintenance, he requested a $30,000 reduction. And under training schools, uh, number ending in 2370, he was requesting 35,000. And 3410, expendable tools, uh, 36,500, for a total of 101,500.
Are you talking about the sheriff's department's budget and not the jail?
Jail, I think. This says 10631 is the number. That's the jail, isn't it?
No, that's sheriff's.
That was coming out of the sheriff?
We're trying to do our part to.
Okay.
We, we sent that over. We cut 101,000.
101,000. I, I haven't seen anything on the radios then.
Was, was, okay, but that is from the jail aspect, not the sheriff's office.
Sheriff's.
Yes, yes.
We cut off the sheriff's.
Uh, there was one item, and I appreciate, uh, I was talking to Buddy in reference to your, uh, your vest. Uh, that don't need to be cut, because I understand that, uh, after so many years, they're not good.
Yes.
Okay, so we don't need to mess with that.
My, what I was suggesting, Phillip, is not that we not get them, but that we purchase them from ARPA instead. So we could cut them, if we're trying to balance the budget, we can cut them and pay for them out of ARPA.
Commissioner, I'm just, on the, yes, I, I thought that's already been done, because of what the auditor put out toward, that we received was 20, what'd you say there?
For the jail.
For the jail, yes.
But he was, what was said was the jail, they were actually talking about the sheriff's department, like, what there's some confusion there.
Okay.
Okay. My, the 117,000 I identified was from the jail.
From the jail.
Yes. Um, and there's, there's also radios in the sheriff's department expendable budget re, equipment request, um, that could also be paid for out of ARPA if we're looking to cut this budget. Have those been changed?
I have not done that.
Okay. If they haven't been changed, they're requesting 10 mobile XL 20 multiband radio and accessories for 64,667.50. And 30 portable XL 200P portable radio and accessories for
What was that?
Uh, which, my previous notes, I, I'm not adding them up again. Previous notes, if they're accurate, indicate. Previous notes, if they're accurate, indicated as 246,558.34. So I think we need to get them, but we might consider getting them out of ARPA instead.
If, if I may, in reference to that, I'd like for them to check that because if I'm not mistaken, remaining restricted, unbudgeted, unobligated in reference to ARPA unless something has been pulled out of it is 754,552.46 and I believe a lot of the other is already obligated, if I'm not mistaken. I know that we have parts of that in reference to grant works. I believe it's 237,000 or something like that. There was something else taken out of the last two days, which is 92,000, if I'm not mistaken. So we need to figure out, am I right? Need to figure out just how much we have and don't depend because ARPA is leaving. If we don't have enough money or left in there, we don't need to overspend it.
Well, guys, we got a lot of numbers that are bouncing around. I don't, David, I think you, you had what, 3, 3.8, you say, was what that all added up to?
Yes, sir. 3.8. 55, 306.
We need to.
Mark realistically with the 2, 30 out of there, he's at, or 2.3, he's at 3 million and I was at 250 in cuts. So. I see if I, let's see, I had, oh, 2.5.
If we cut for purposes of this budget and a tax rate that it impacts, the flock safety Falcon cameras, the T7 taser bundle.
Those weren't out too, I think.
Spares for the L3 Harris radio system and the radios I spoke about earlier, the mobile XL 200 multiband radio and accessories and the portable radios. And I wouldn't support doing this because these are needed for the sheriff's department unless we are going to pay for it somewhere else. But we can, if we make those cuts and instead pay for them out of ARPA, that would be 465,050.34, almost a half million dollars.
Say that number again, please.
465,050, 50, $50.34.
Out of which budget?
The expendable equipment for the sheriff. Now, I'm a little nervous that if there's been changes to this since the proposed budget that I'm looking at now. But if those are good, still act good, if that's still the request, we can make that cut, pay for it out of ARPA instead.
Wait, have you, you say out of ARPA, have they been okay by ARPA in reference to, is that already budgeted or is this a different radios that we're talking about?
Radios are already approved by our consultant, so they, that can be paid for out of contingency. Sorry, the restricted portion. And we'll have to come back and figure out how to split this and make this happen, but we know the money's there. So it can be paid, the radios for sure can be paid for and they're the greater bulk of this. Can for sure be paid out of the restricted portion because we've already done it with the approval of our consultants. Anything that's questionable and not okayed for this by the consultant can be paid for out of the unrestricted portion of the ARPA funds, which constitutes the great bulk of them.
So if that's, for easy math, I'm going to call it 500,000. We can get the exact numbers. But your sheet you requested earlier is 3 point, or yeah, a little, little over a $3 million cut. And I was at 2.5. If we cut that, it gets you and I in agreement of the 300, of the $3 million cut.
Me neither?
Yes.
I think we're still off, but that's okay. We're moving in the right direction.
You got 5.37 on your sheet, 2 million of it in road materials and if you're not going to take it out and the 3 million's not even in this, but neither one of those helps this budget. The 2.3 million dollars you're saying will reduce this by 5.3, or 5, yeah, 5.3 million cuts, 2.3, that doesn't even help us at all in this budget. They're not in our budget. They're not in this budget.
The, okay, I was not going to go circle back around to tax rate stuff because I don't want to go around the Mulberry Bush a whole lot, but since you bring it up, I will. Yes, the court can choose whether or not to cut the precinct budgets. The precincts are funded by a tax rate. It is a portion of the overall rate. If you turn to page nine in the proposed budget, which is posted online, it breaks out the percentage of the tax rate that funds MNO, that's the general fund, and the percentage that funds the precincts. If you cut from the precincts, you can recalculate those numbers and a portion of you cut from the precincts can go to the MNO or not go anywhere, just be cut. But precincts don't have our own money. It comes from the taxes. So if you choose, if the court chooses not to cut the precinct budgets, that's its choice to make, but we absolutely can and it does impact the taxes.
Well, it does when you put it in. Here you had a list of cuts and you weren't breaking that out and this was why I made the comment. It wasn't clear to me. That's what, that's why I was kind of asking, what are you trying to do? So, I mean, that's, that's certainly up to the court or to the commissioners and all if they want to cut the, your road budgets, but I can't understand why you'd want to do that when people are talking about, we got to get the roads fixed and now we're cutting road budgets. That doesn't make any sense.
Because they don't, also don't want to be overtaxed.
I understand that, too.
So the proposal in whole was to cut the budget, the precinct budgets and offset it from ARPA. That was a proposal.
But that's just a one-year fix.
Then we have to make up that 800,000 or whatever it was. We'll have to make it up next year, but then we won't have as much. Understand, and I'm talking about finances and all this and figuring out where what is spent, ARPA in reference to the precincts do not need to be combined. This, we've done this before several times, not combine them, but basically had a way of doing it to make sure that we showed accountability, we need to stick with it. And I tell you what, I don't think we ought to cut anything from the precincts. We, we've cut, we've cut from the precincts for the last 20 years to make sure everybody was taken care of. That's true.
That is true.
That's very true. We're the last ones to get it, whether it be law enforcement, whether it be the judicial, we're the last ones and we basically need some help. We do not, we need a regular budget plus monies from ARPA that are basically can be used and I'm looking at a 737, 734, 754, 552, 46, basically possibly available for that. And y'all talked about giving the 800,000 to each one to where we could have it. The people that I work for deserve that and not to be cutting our precinct budgets.
All right, well, I'll try this again. I'll make a motion that we cut 100,000 out of the forensic analysis line item number ending in 2141 and the 400 enterprise, cut the $400,000 out of enterprise general admission, I think that's 2145. The 2 million out of general administration budget, line item 7600. And the, what it marked, help me, the radios, do you have a number there in the line item?
Sheriff's 3410 in the amount of 465,000.
Even? All right.
I think we, to do that, we need to come. Okay, then the information I have available to me is not, not correct.
All right, so how much was it?
What did you have to say, my friend? You evidently have some information before we decide, I guess.
Buddy Oxford with the sheriff's office. The, at the time that we prepared our budget, we had to have it into the judge's office early June. At that time, we requested money for the radios. Once we got a purchase requisition for the radios, I notified county judge to strike that from our budget request, which was done in accordance to the documents that I've been given for the current budget request. So we're not asking.
And that's the radios y'all bought with the SB 22 money then, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So we've got our, our radios for the county sheriff's office, the courthouse, the constables and homeland securities.
That's, that's good news, Buddy. Thank you. And thank you to sheriff's department, by the way. They always have a very well-presented thorough budget for us.
There was no money left requested in that line item?
Yes.
I don't have my book.
Yeah, third, under that 3410, the SOs.
Yes.
We had originally requested 559,685 and with the purchases that we made since that point, we reduced it down to 188,443.
Okay.
We reduced it down to 188, I believe is what's reflected on the report that I have.
Okay. Thank you, Buddy.
Yes, sir.
I don't, I don't feel like I'll back up on my motion to not do that. I would strike that part from my motion and reduce 30, from facilities, the $30,000 in line item 2234, 65,000 in line item 2260, 30,000 line item 2263, 10,000 line item 2267, 10,03150 and, get across there, and 10,0226, which is a total of 155,000. So that makes it, the motion totaled to 2.65 million dollars under my proposed and we have to, and then this, the 101,500 cut out of the jail budget for software repair and maintenance, 2235, training and schools, 2370 and expendable tools, 3410. That was a total of 101,500.
Your honor.
Yeah.
I apologize for interrupting. That 2235 cannot be cut. The county's software will not work if any of Brandon's line items are cut.
Okay.
He's not able to be here today, but those are for servers, judicial software, antivirus and other things. Those are the minimum numbers of the year. Otherwise, our software will not work. His items are the 2235, 36 and then 3420.
Okay.
And to provide additional information, but all of those are the minimums.
Okay, so I can strike the 30 on the 2235 and I did not cut any of his others. That was the only one that was requested by Buddy. So that would lower that to 71,500.
Your honor, the cuts that you just mentioned, you said the jail, those cuts you mentioned should be from the sheriff's.
Oh, those are sheriff's office? Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. I thought you were the 631. Okay, from sheriff's office. So if my math's right, that's 2,721,500, I think. Somebody can check my math. But I make that as a motion to cut those items and approve the budget as otherwise presented.
What were those numbers again?
It was 100,000 cut out of forensic, 400 out of enterprise, 2 million out of contingency and the total of 155 out of Mark's sheet, he handed out the, all of the facilities maintenance, added up to 155. Our motion was to cut all of those in his suggestion and then the 71,500 out of the sheriff's department budget is the line items I read. So that was 2,721,500, if I got my math right.
2,721,500.
I don't have a calculator. All right, guys, for lack of a second.
That does not, you're not wanting to cut the precincts, correct? And the ARPA money is completely out of it?
Correct. We can't go to an ARPA, it's not on our budget.
I understand that, but we need to consider whether we have it in there.
No, we can take a 10-minute break.
Okay. Let's take a 10-minute recess. It's 12:30. Can I?
Yes.
I guess I have to go to executive session.
Yeah.
All right, let me know if we're back up. Are we back up?
We are live.
All right, it's 12:43, we're back in session. Commissioners, any other suggestions or motion or anything?
I'm happy to make a motion Judge, but...
So off of David's list, what was, what can we mark out from Brandon that he said that we've got to leave alone?
All of it, basically. Yeah.
Judge, just to restate my proposal earlier, and I'll do it as briefly as possible. My proposal was to cut $100,000 from forensic analysis, $30,000 from other repair and maintenance, $65,000 from building repair and maintenance, 2507 Lee Street, $30,000 from building repair and maintenance, 2700 Johnson Common, $10,000 from building repair and maintenance, 2110 Pickett, $10,000 from janitorial supplies, $10,000 from building repair and maintenance, 2217 Washington, $400,000 the totality of the enterprise contingency fund, $20,000 from lobbying and influence, and then cut $2 million from contingency. Also, $12,500 from court reporter services, and $300,000 from contingency expense in the Exchange Building, and move that. And then, $2 million in road materials for the combined four precincts. And to complete that, the recommendation was that we offset those cuts from road material, and I don't know if this could be included, it would probably need to be a second motion, but offset those cuts out of ARPA at a two or three to one basis. And that we do a transfer in from capital improvement, or, well, this would need to be a second, another motion as well, but the plan as a whole would recommend that whatever we think is an adequate sum to keep in capital murder expense, we transfer that in from capital improvement. So, I mean, I'll do my best to put that into a straightforward motion. Unless that was adequately...
Well, again, I can say that, I mean, you can make the motion when you want, but the $300,000 in the Exchange Building is not in this budget that we're trying to approve. That you're worried about with the amount of money that is in a deficit budget. It is not in this budget. It's in the Exchange Building budget, which has its own budget.
Are we going to vote on the Exchange Building budget separately?
It's part of the whole budget package, but you're making it, you're doing this, and it's not included in the total of what the deficit, it's not in the deficit budget of this budget.
This proposal is not solely for the purpose of bridging the deficit, but is also for the purpose of simply identifying where there is excess funds that can be cut or moved to the benefit of the taxpayers.
Again, it's, the Exchange Building money is not taxpayer money. It's money that's driven by leasing of the building. It's not taxpayer money.
We'll have to disagree on that.
How can you disagree? We've got leases on all of it.
Because the...
They don't pay any taxpayer dollars out of it. They're not funding it.
Is that money stuck there for forever, or can it be moved?
No, it can be moved. I mean, you can, you could move some out of it, but you can't cut, if you want to go change and cut that budget, but it's, it's not helping fund ten budget, is what I keep saying.
Okay, here, I'll make a motion. I make a motion that we cut $100,000 from forensic analysis, $30,000 from other repair and maintenance. Do I need to go over these, or can I just identify the list? I'll keep going. $65,000 from, dollars from building repair and maintenance, 2507 Lee Street Courthouse, $30,000 from building repair and maintenance, 2700 Johnson Common, $10,000 from building repair and maintenance, 2110 Pickett, $10,000 from janitorial supplies and facilities maintenance budget, $10,000 from building repair and maintenance, 2217 Washington Street, $400,000 from enterprise contingency, $20,000 from lobbying and influence, $2 million from contingency, $12,500 from court reporter services and general admin, $725,000 from capital murder expense, and transfer $300,000 from contingency expense with the Exchange Building to the general fund, $2 million from precinct, combined precinct road materials budgets. I think that's it.
How much road budget?
$2 million.
$2 million, okay.
So moved.
Tell me something. Got a question. How much do we have right now available that's not obligated in ARPA? Whether it's restricted or not restricted?
I didn't, I didn't bring Grant Works' book.
If I'm reading the report correctly, Philip, the answer to your question is $7,39,911.28.
And $0.28, okay. How much is that obligated? How much of it is obligated? Because I have only unrestricted $754,552. That's a lot of difference. Okay, the other part of it...
Obligated and restricted are not...
How much is restricted and unrestricted, and how much is not obligated out of each one?
The amount I just gave is not obligated. The last, some, the last funds we obligated from ARPA were, for the radios, a $2.4 million, and they are already accounted for in this, before the $7 million number. Of the ARPA funds remaining is $6,285,358.82. That is unrestricted. $754,552.46 restricted. Or a total of $7,39,911.28.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question on the motion?
I think, yeah, until the motion is, is done, we, I don't think discussion's appropriate.
The one problem I have with the motion, or concern, is I, I don't agree with taking the $2 million out of the precincts. I understand it helps the budget, but when we put the money back in there out of ARPA, it looks like to me next year that we're going to have to make up $2 million before we get back to zero. So it looks like we're getting back in the hole, or we're just, we're digging the hole, we're kicking the can.
We're kicking the can.
Down the road. I, I may be looking at it wrong. That's, that's why I'm asking. I, I mean, it helps us out right now, yes, but not only next year, but the following years. I mean, that's $500,000 per precinct that we're going to have to make up somewhere. And the way you make that up is going to have to either be hitting the tax rate, or we're going to have to generate more revenue, which we probably will get more revenue. We hope, we don't know, but we, the point is, we've got to make the $2 million back up somewhere. And, and I agree, it does, it could help right now, but we have to look down the road to make sure that it's not going to hurt us later. I mean, I may be looking at it wrong.
Daniel, is it procedurally per Robert's rules correct for me to amend my own motion to include designating ARPA funds for road and bridges?
I don't believe this Commissioner's Court's adopted Robert's rules.
Okay, whatever rules we're following, is it appropriate?
And the next question then is, ARPA funds aren't part of this budget, I don't think, are they? You consider them part of the budget?
Yes.
Okay.
They are...
But they're not part of the Fund X budget that we're trying to vote on?
We're adopting the whole budget. We're not just adopting Fund X.
I understand that.
ARPA's Page 86 and 87.
If there hasn't been a second, then yes, you can amend your own motion.
Okay.
Is that what you're asking?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll amend my motion to designate $6 million in unrestricted ARPA funds to be moved to capital improvement road line item, the same manner as we have done before, divided evenly between the four precincts for new road upgrades and major repairs.
Are you saying you're doing that as part of the same motion to everything else?
Correct.
I don't know if you can do that.
That was my question.
Well, your question was, can you amend, not can you bind ARPA funds. That's a totally different thing.
Okay.
Uh, mind you, we have to have separate motions and votes on all the ARPA stuff, because we have to prove up to the federal government that it was done appropriately. If you're adding it in as a given trade on a budgetary issue, there's a chance that the federal government may deny that spending.
Okay.
So I'm not saying you can't do it. I'm saying that that needs to be divided up into two completely different motions, just to be safe. And I can't sit here and tell you that they would deny it. I can't tell you that they're, that would be, they'd take a hard look at that.
Sure. I would draw my, my amendment then, but David, that, that is my answer to your valid concern.
Order pizza. I tell you what, seriously, what we had talked about earlier in combination with the ability to, I believe it was $2.4 million that, wasn't it $2.4 million that we were able to cut? Is that correct? Or was it 3.8? Do you remember?
That's 3.8 is what David said.
Okay, the three, that was when he was making a motion, that 3.8. But basically, taking any other part of it, I still have the thought that we take money out of contingency, put what we need to, to try to get closer to it, and then put it back in Number 10. And I believe that would help out. I know that we're, we're doing, you know, somebody asked me, she said, would you do anything any different? Well, it's easy to answer that later on, but not now. So we could sit here all day trying to figure out this, but it, basically, all it would take is transferring money with the cuts that we made, transferring money from the other to help kind of balance it a little bit.
We haven't made any cuts yet.
I do not think, seriously, and I appreciate Commissioner Monroe, we don't need to get that combined. We do not need all the money in that budget having to do with the precincts. I want to tell you something. I've been here 20 years trying to build roads and maintain them. We don't need to cut nothing with anything. We need to keep that money in there and give them, give us $200,000 more to be spent by this next year. How many of y'all live out in the country? Raise your hand.
All right, we can't, we can't.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Hey, can we get a comment since he asked?
No.
I would love to call him now.
I apologize. I apologize.
It's a legal issue, all right? Because I'm getting snotty with anybody who's in law.
I apologize.
All right, here a second. Motion dies for lack of a second. I guess I'd like to make a statement that, you know, that it's, it's all good and fine, and I don't want to pay any more tax than anybody else, and it's fine that we're, we're going to drive some money down. That's okay, to spend some of our fund balance down. But, but understand, we only have a half a cent tax rate for our debt. There's not a county around that's below probably five or six cents. If we spend down and spend down where we can't keep paying for things that we're doing that have to get done, we're going to reach a point, we're going to have to go to debt, and your tax rate will have to go up. If we, if we get to some compromise where we still have room to move and do things that need to be done to make our facilities better and to keep our people engaged and keep them, keep us fully staffed where we can serve the public, then we're going to be better off, in my opinion, long term. We've got to have a plan for the future, not tear it down and go back to where it was five years ago when the county had no money. And, and that's, that's my suggestion, for, at least ask everybody to think about that. It's, it's a tough call for all of us. Nobody wants to spend any more than we have to. But again, I've said it earlier, everything we got's old, and it's just hard to maintain and keep it and know when something is going to break. Anybody else got some suggestions?
I'm working on some numbers.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we cut $100,000 out of forensics, $300,000 out of the facilities, which is Page 27 and 29, $80,000...
Which line items?
See, this one don't even have.
Yeah.
We got too many of them.
I was working off of David's worksheet here. I'll pull it for now until somebody else has something.
What you got right there was forensics and also the enterprise, correct? You got that far?
You got the 400 enterprise.
All right, let me make another stab at it. I'll make a motion that we approve the budget with a $100,000 cut in forensic of the District Attorney's Office line item number 2141. $30,000 other repair and maintenance and facilities, line item 2234. $65,000 build out of facilities, 2260. $30,000 out of, line item 2263 out of facilities. $10,000 out of facilities, line item 2267. $10,000 out of facilities, line item number 3150. $10,000 out of facilities, 2266. $400,000 enterprise out of General Administration, 2145. $2 million out of contingency, General Administration, 7600. And, uh... And I'd recommend that we move $500,000 to Fund X from the Exchange Building, and is that Fund 15, I think? Yeah, Fund 15. So that would get us to 3.21500 in cuts in new revenue. And the 500 coming out of, out of the Exchange Building is not taxpayer money. It's from being a landlord.
How much would all that come up to?
It's 3.21500. $3,221,500 that would be taken off of the deficit of 5.8. So we'd have a deficit of 2.6 roughly.
Would that, in reference to the $800, in reference to, well, we're, yeah, it's ARPA. Would that also be within this budget to reflect that?
To what? Reflect what?
Precinct, precinct, all precincts receiving $800,000 or $200,000 on each one of them. In other words, ARPA money. Basically, what I'm asking is...
All right, so you...
We've got our reg, we have the regular situation. Could we ear-tag 200,000? Wasn't it 800,000 we were adding?
Philip, I'll amend my motion to include $200,000 to each road and bridge budget from ARPA fundings to, I guess, your material budget. Can I do that?
I don't think you can do that if you're ARPA's.
Okay, well, it's in a...
It'd be part of a separate vote.
Separate vote?
Yeah.
Okay. So after we do everything today, or just after we approve the budget? Since this is fun...
It's going to be part of the budget.
It's Fund X. This is fun, for Fund X.
Understood, but...
Keep me straight.
You're talking about, um, you know, obligating some of that ARPA money. You, that is part of the budget. You can do that under today's agenda items, but it shouldn't be part of a vote on the budget. It should be a separate vote, just to keep our funding obligations, our grant obligation assurances.
Got you. So, so we approve, if we approve the budget, then we'd have turnaround, and then we, then we could vote on it before we go do the rates, or after, at the end of the meeting?
Yeah, it would need to be under this particular item. And then the second line, or the agenda.
Yeah, agenda item.
And then that would be, it would need to be immediately after this, because the second item on there is the ratification of that budget. And so it could be, it just needs to be between your initial budget vote and the ratification vote.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so I withdraw that portion of it. The ARPA fund, yeah, I can't do it. We can do it after the vote. So, you got my motion? Everybody, I need to read it again?
Read it one more time so we're clear as mud on it.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we cut $100,000 from the District Attorney, line item 2141. $30,000 from, cut $30,000 from facilities, line item 2234. Cut $65,000 from line item 2260 out of facilities. $30,000 out of facilities, line 2263. $10,000 out of facilities, 2267. $10,000 cut out of janitorial supplies facilities, 3150. $10,000 out of facilities, line 2266. $400,000 on enterprise, general admission, 21, line item 2145. $2 million out of contingency, general admission, 7600. And then include $500,000 to be added to the revenue of Fund X budget, moving fund balance from the Exchange Building Fund 15 to Fund X. It's a revenue item.
For a total of what?
3.3, $3,221,500.
That's a motion?
That's a motion.
I'll second it.
All right, got a motion second. Any discussion? Is this a voice vote?
Yes, this has to be a record vote, one person.
Okay, it's a record vote, okay.
Is the motion to adopt the budget, or to make these cuts to the proposed budget?
I thought I said approve the budget.
It was to adopt the budget with those changes.
With those changes.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Discussion, gentlemen, I, I'm glad that, you know, we're making cuts. I'm pretty conflicted here though, because I still think there's another $2 million to be made. So, that's my concern. I've stayed in my position. I don't want to hold to people here watching us hostage by restating it again. One item, Judge, we haven't addressed in the budget is last meeting we, the subject issue was brought up of the account, proposed accounting department. And so
Okay, I can address that.
Okay.
Brittany and, Brittany and I met, Brittany, Mary and I met, and we're all in agreement to do Brittany's suggestion. We have little things to work out. We've agreed that if we can, if we don't have any hurdles, we got one that we're concerned about. And, but we're hopeful that that can happen. And when we do, then we'll do a budget amendment and move the salaries out of the proposed accounting office into her budget. And Bernice would go back into my budget. We'd stay the same, the dollars are the same. We just have to move them to change the department, the way we were headed with it.
And all of y'all are agreeable to that?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So we need a Commissioner Mark Hutchins, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner David Monroe, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Martin, how do you vote?
They voted no, is what they said. I'm not finished with this, no.
Okay. Well, it fails there, so we have to continue.
It fails, yeah, you have to have at least three in favor.
I know, so we just, no reason to go any further. All right. All right. Motion fails.
Did Commissioner Martin vote no? I didn't hear his vote.
Idiot.
Okay, gentlemen, I made a motion earlier. If, if any of y'all are movable on, it seems y'all are getting hung up on the 2 million from the, from the road and bridge. And I get that. But I would simply urge y'all, we're trying to cover this deficit as close, as much as possible. So if we're not going to agree to that, we've got to get it from somewhere. It's got to come from somewhere. I also propose the, in the 135,050 dollars from those four line items and the handout I gave y'all, the operating supplies dues and a couple of other things. Training budgets that tended to be unused. I know it's not a huge sum, but that's still there. So I'll remind y'all of it. Commissioner Monroe, looks like you're working on a motion. Commissioner Martin, if you don't want to cut 2 million from the precincts and you're opposed to the motion, where would you like to make additional cuts?
I would like to see as what was proposed earlier in reference to moving monies from capital, I mean, come from contingency. So much and then putting it over, I'm having to find it. And then have it put back over in number 10. And I'm trying to find that letter and it makes sense. It's pretty good. For the general fund, the entire would be recorded and transferred. For the capital improvement fund, the transfer out of account because the transfer in the general is not specific to a department. This generic transfer account would be used. The transfer out of the capital improvement funds would be similar in that it does not rebate to a department and should also use a generic department designation. Once these accounts are created, they should have a budget value associated to them so that any person can see the effect of the transfer of the county's record. The commissioner's court actions should probably be completed after the budget is adopted or as a part of the budget adoption. This would establish the budgetary authority to make the transfer based on the motion of the court. Understand this, I do want to cut everything that we can, but I don't want to cut what doesn't need to be cut. I've had to put up with budgets basically dragging money from one to the other for the simple reason of not knowing I had enough money. I think you ought to pad it. I'm not talking about 400,000 dollars and nothing like that, but I'm thinking that y'all have gone down to one or two or three of these saying, we're going to cut it at a thousand dollars or 700. You go have a flat on all your tires and have to replace it, you done spent a thousand dollars. So how do you expect a business to operate just on that, just on that amount? A car tires will cost a thousand dollars and we're asking somebody to have operating funds that, that they don't have the money to do so? I, I want to cut everything we can. We have two procedures, but I tell you what, all these papers right here that we have that we've been negotiating, what these people need to do is sit down and write it and say, hey, this is what we've got. Y'all can't keep up with it and I'm familiar with it and I can't hardly. We've had about three or four of these papers handed out of what we want to cut. Then you don't know which one you're doing. And every time we get another thing going, basically they come up with something else to cut. Write it down, just like Mr. Monroe did, and then go from there.
Gentlemen, maybe it'd be helpful to break motions into smaller pieces. Instead of trying to pass the full budget on a motion, let's start with proposed cuts. And if we agree on some, let's start by making those cuts first.
There's no public comments right now.
Okay. If we all agree on forensic analysis, Daniel, is it proper for me to make a motion?
Yeah, that's, I'm sure that's a true statement. We've made motions and nothing's been passed or seconded. Those have been recommendations in motions, but
Okay.
Not everybody's made a motion, so
I'll, okay. I'll make a motion. I make a motion, we cut 100,000 from the forensic analysis budget line item number 2141. Thirty thousand from other repair and maintenance out of facilities 22, line item 2234. Sixty-five thousand from building, repair and maintenance 2507 Lee Courthouse out of facilities and maintenance line item number 2260. Thirty thousand from building, repair and maintenance, did I just say 2,700? They're all running together. Apologize if, apologize if it's a redundancy. Thirty thousand from building, repair and maintenance 2,700 Johnson Common out of the facilities and maintenance budget line item number 2263. Ten thousand dollars from building, repair and maintenance 2110 Pickett from facilities and maintenance line item number 2267. Ten thousand dollars from janitorial supplies for facilities maintenance line item number 3150. Ten thousand dollars from building, repair and maintenance 2217 Washington from facilities maintenance line item number 2266. And 400,000 dollars from enterprise contingency and general admin line item number 2145. Make a motion for these cuts to the proposed budget.
No second? Motion dies for lack of a second.
I'll make a motion, we cut 100,000 from the forensic analysis line item in the district attorney's budget line item number 2141. That's the motion.
I hear a second? Motion fails for lack of a second.
I can't break it down more than that.
Can I make a motion?
Sure.
On my original motion, we said we didn't need to cut the, we couldn't cut the computer expenses out of it.
Right.
But I'd like to make a motion that, I need to read all these separately.
Yeah, you got to tell us what line item and all.
Okay. Make a motion, we cut line item 2141, 100,000. Line item 2238 on page 27, 30,000. Item number 2260, 150,000. 2261, 5,000. 2263, 40,000. 2267, 25,000. 2269, 8,000. 2266, 25,000. 2260, 15,000. 2261, 5,000. 2263, 10,000. 2268, 4,000. 2269, 10,000. 2263, 35,000. 2260, 2,000. 2261, 5,000. 2262, 5,000. 2263, 3,000. 2260, 1,000. 2261, 2,000. 2263, 5,000.
He's a start, so I'll second it.
Yep. Go page 29.
Are you still making a motion?
Yes, sir. What I'm doing is going through all the cuts that I was
I'm trying to make a second on it.
Okay, I thought you were complete.
And
Tell me this.
Hang on, wait a minute, let him finish his motion.
And on 29, I propose take out the 600 and 8,000. That's on, there's all that whole page there, 3,200, there's I need to call them off, 613, 614, 615.
What department is it?
Facilities.
Okay, you're still in facilities. All right, go ahead.
621, 623, 631, 632, 641, 642, 652, 653, 665. Go to page 38. Line item 2145, 400,000. Line item 7600, 2 million dollars. Line item 2133, I think we said we'd go, say 725 on there. All of those numbers, not sure what they're going to equal up to. I think we're going to be right there around that. Originally, they were, it was 5,274,425,000. We left the computer hardware and the voters in that number. That was 824,425 dollars out of it. So this, if we take these cuts right here, that's going to cut the budget 4,450,000. And that's my motion.
Enterprise included, right?
If we, I'll make a motion, do that, and if we need to replace it, we'll take the money out of capital improvement.
Was the 400,000 in reference to enterprise, was that inclusive?
Yes, sir.
I'll second it, but I would like to caveat something in discussion.
Okay, you are seconding it?
Yes.
And then having a discussion?
My only concern, Commissioner Martin, sorry, Monroe, is that on page 29, which is a facilities utilities budget, that, that's, I think, where the electric bills and such are paid. So if we're going to, I mean, that needs to be, there needs to be money there for that, so.
I can change the motion to, or I can amend, which item was that? Page 29?
29, yep.
Here to date, we've used 519,000.
Requested budget is 600 and 8,000.
I can make a motion to amend my motion to change that to 600,000 requested.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
And how much are you saying that this will cut at this point?
That was down, I'd have to do the math back again. That's 4,442,000?
All right, any other discussion, questions? All right, so we got a motion and a second. Commissioner
Sorry, Judge, I would amend the motion to
You can amend his motion, Kenny.
Amend, can only, can it only be, can it not be amended?
Yes.
No, if you already seconded it, you need to vote against it. And if it fails, then you can make another motion.
Okay.
All right, we okay? All right, Commissioner Hutchins, how do you vote?
And to clarify, this is, we're voting on these cuts, not to adopt the budget.
No, it's approve the budget, wasn't it?
Yeah. Oh, I'm a no vote.
All right, Commissioner Monroe?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Harrison?
Yes.
Judge Stovall, yes. All right. All right. Ready for number two?
Yes.
Okay. Item number two, consideration in action authorizing the ratification of the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget that does not, that does does raise more property taxes than the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Anything?
All right, I know that this seems strange, this is one of the byproducts of the many, many changes over the years to all the budgetary requirements from the legislature. Uh, it looks like and sounds like you're doing the same thing that you just did, but it's not, it's a different code section. And so, if someone can make a motion to move that the county ratify the fiscal year, uh, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget that does raise more property taxes than the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget, that is a necessary vote to finalize the approval of the budget before you get to the tax rate.
It's not a record vote, though.
It's not a record vote, this is a, a normal vote.
Okay, entertain a motion to ratify the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget that does raise more property taxes than the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget. So move.
Second.
And a motion second, all in favor say aye. All opposed?
No.
Is that one no?
No.
Aren't you supposed to...
You're not ratifying the budget?
Uh, is it?
I guess I understand the motion.
All this says is ratify the budget that you just accepted.
Yes.
Okay, so one, one no and four ayes, okay. All right, so action item number three, public hearing discussion in action on adopting or approving the proposed fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five tax rate that will not exceed the no new revenue tax rate and all related issues, and record the vote. All right. So, the, I'll entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five tax rate that will not exceed the no new revenue tax rate. Oh, I did not, I'm sorry, I forgot. Uh, just time all the, the public hearing, anybody wishes to speak for or against this, come forward and state your name and address.
Jeff Phillips, six oh three Mink, I'll just make a few comments. One, appreciate the work that you guys have, have done, uh, it didn't get us all the way there, um, I'm disappointed in that. There are still some cuts that this court has un, been unwilling to, to take, I think that you have looked, um, myopically for twelve months and not down the road, the additional revenue that's going to come onto the tax rolls, which would offset some things as well. So, as a taxpayer, uh, disappointed, uh, but, uh, will say that you guys have put in a lot of, of work, so I'll give you credit for that, but, uh, it's, it's, uh, it's not enough. And, um, you're adopting a budget on the backs of the taxpayers, uh, there are things that could have been addressed, five percent increases across the board for every county employee every year, uh, can be looked at, you're unwilling to even have a discussion on it, it's been up, been brought up many times. So, um, that'll be just something that we'll have to consider. County employees are worth their pay, I'm not saying that, but I am saying five percent every year across the board for every employee needs to be discussed, but it wasn't even discussed at all over the last four meetings. Maybe you can't, I don't know. But, um, that is affecting the tax rate, and that is affecting every other Hunt County resident, and, um, that needs to be considered in the future.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else? I'll close the public hearing. All right, entertain a motion to approve the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five tax rate that will not exceed the no new revenue tax rate. So move. How much it is? Okay. Uh, duh, 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 duh. It's right here on the sheet somewhere. Uh, the tax rate is zero point three-two-three-three-two-eight. Okay, slower?
Yeah.
Point, zero point three-two-three-three-two-eight. All right. Any new motion, or, does he need a re...
I'd repeat.
That was, Steve made a motion, Phillips, thoughts?
That's why I'm saying, I was waiting for y'all to correct that, y'all had to say the point three-three-two-three-eight-two-eight. I will second it.
All right, any discussion? Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. All right, no discussion. Commissioner Hutchins, how do you vote? Commissioner Monroe, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Harrison, how do you vote?
Yes.
Judge Stovall votes yes. All right. Is there anything else we need to do today, Daniel, or?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else from commissioners? Not an entertaining motion to adjourn?
Wait, question. Basically, you advised this could be done later on in reference to that offer money as far as material, when do we not need to act upon that, if we can today, that'll be good, if we can...
No, 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 you can't act today because it had to be before the second vote that you took, that's not on the agenda as its own separate item.
Good enough.
It can be added on the eighth, in the next agenda, October the eighth.
Good enough, thank you.
All right, entertain a motion to adjourn? So move.
Second.
And a motion second, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned at one thirty-eight, thank you, everyone.
Wow. They keep going all over the place, I'm just ready to, we got it this far, and then next year we just need to work, diligence, so, but thank you. I promise you, I'll do better next year.
So, we need to sign?
I'm, I'm...
Those are the correct sheets, and I don't, even the reunion didn't bring me any new ones, so we'll have to, we'll have to get them signed, but, yeah, we'll, I'll get that...
Well, we got to do it today, for sure, probably need to try to get everybody today.
Yeah, let me see that, because Daniel's the one that, hey, Daniel, did you have any new order adopting tax rate sheets?
Oh, should be, the same. Um, did I have any new ones?
Mm-hmm, with the correct dates on it?
Oh, uh, no, but I can, uh, go back to my office and, uh, update that and send it back to you in a minute.
Okay, yeah.
And then everybody has to sign?
Yeah.
So... Commissioners, Mark?
There wouldn't be a...
Just a second, David?
No.
We have to sign off on the record vote, and Daniel didn't bring new ones with a new date, he's fixing to go change it and send it to Becky, can y'all stop by her office after a while?
We're just, we're changing it right here.
Oh, you're going to change it, okay, well, we still got to sign it before you get away, okay, yeah.